Good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. Before we begin, I just want to open the meeting with just a few reminders of our rules before we start. First of all, please silence your cellphones if you have that opportunity now. Also, if you are interested in speaking before the commission, there are forms that our staff has. Jared has some right here in the front. I've already received a few for people who are wanting to speak. So just please go ahead and sign up here so that we can make sure we call your name. When you come to speak to the commission, please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to address the commission. We do ask that you limit your comments to prevent any repetitious comments, and that if you're here with a large group, we'd ask that you select a spokesperson to speak on behalf of all of the issues that the group is facing. We also ask that you just be respectful of all of our time, because it's a great afternoon, and we have a lot of people here with a lot of different cases. And please be respectful of our rules, and please be respectful of each other as we're going through this process. So with that being said, let's move to our next agenda item, which is to receive the minutes of the November 10, 2022, meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes from the November 10, 2022, meeting.
Commissioner Claire moves that we receive the minutes from the November 10, 2022, meeting. And forgive us as we are making sure that our technology is fully working here.
All second.
Okay. Are we ready at that?
Computer's waiting.
Okay. Are you, are we all right to move forward with a voice vote? Okay.
Need a second.
Okay. Commissioner, the motion's been made to receive the minutes from the previous meeting by Commissioner Claire. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. And I guess we can just start with a roll call. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Gauvine?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. With that, the motion carries, and the minutes from our previous meeting have been received. We're now in line for continuance requests. We'll begin with uncontested continuance requests.
Yes, item 27, KC 7476, deferred to January 12. Item 28, KC 7480, deferred to January 12. Item 29, KC 7410, deferred to March 9. Item 30, SPUD 1480, deferred to January 12. Item 31, SP 570, deferred to January 12. Item 32, SPUD 1423, deferred to January 12. Item 33, CE 1075, deferred to January 12. Item 34, case SPUD 1474, deferred to January 12. Item 35, case PUD 1908, deferred to February 23. Item 36, case PC 10841 has been withdrawn, and item 37, PC 10846 has also been withdrawn.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items that were just read into the record? Seeing none, I believe we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we grant the continuance requests, uncontested continuance requests as read.
Commissioner Claire moves that we grant the uncontested continuance requests as read. Seeing, it's seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Let's see if we've got our, there we go. Been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for new continuance requests.
We have two. Item 16, case SPUD 1466, deferred to January 12. And item 25, case SPUD 1464, deferred to February 23.
And is there anyone here wishing to be heard on either of those items, item 16 and item 25? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
I move to grant the new continuance requests as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to grant the new continuance requests as read. And we're going to see if we're getting the technology working.
I'll second.
It's been, the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle, and we'll move to a voice vote. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Gauvine?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. With that, the motion carries, and we have granted those continuance requests. We're now in line for our public hearings, and we'll begin with the consent docket.
Item one is KC 7505, final plat of the community at Surrey Plaza, located north of Northwest Expressway and east of North Mustang Road. Item two is KC 7507, final plat of The Brook Phase Four, located north of West Memorial Road and west of North Piedmont Road. Item three, KC 7510, final plat of The Village Townhomes, Section One, located north of Southwest 89th Street and west of Southwestern Road. Item four, case PC 10854, application to rezone 4832 Richmond Square from R2 with the CUP 78 Community Unit Plan overlay District 202, with the CUP 78 Community Unit Plan overlay Districts. And finally, item five, case PC 10855, application to rezone 117 East Madison Street from C3 to R2.
Thank you. And I do believe we have some, at least one person here to speak on item four.
Yeah.
So we'll intend to remove that item from the consent docket. As far as the other items, is there anyone else here wishing to be heard on items one, two, three, or five? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent docket excluding item four to be heard individually.
The motion before the commission is to approve the consent docket as read except for item four, and we will see if we got our technology working. Looks like it. And the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Before we consider the items requiring a separate vote, I believe we need to make a change to the agenda. Commissioner Claire?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to move item 14 up to be heard after item 11 and before item 12. It's a companion item.
Thank you. And just so that commissioners are aware, we are handling, we are considering applications for both the zoning and the plating today. So we need to hear the zoning before we can hear the case about the plating, so. The motion's been made by Commissioner Claire to amend the agenda to hear item 14 after item 11 today. Is there a second? Or I guess let's see if we can get the technology working on this one. Okay.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle, and we can have a voice vote. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Claire votes aye. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Gauvine?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
I also vote aye, and it looks like the motion carries. So we will hear item 14 after item 11. We'll begin with, next on our agenda, with the items requiring a separate vote, and we'll start with item four.
This is PC 10854, application to rezone 4832 Richmond Square from R2 and CUP 78 to O2 and CUP 78.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, the application before you is to take what is zoned R2 under the CUP 78 and move it to O2. These buildings that you see within the subject tract are office buildings. They have been office buildings for many decades. My understanding is that the neighbors that are here are here concerned with the ability of this tract to access Mattern Drive. There is a prohibition from this tract accessing Mattern Drive that exists through a plat note. Nothing about this case will in any way alter that. The plat note exists, it's running with the land, and the zoning cannot affect that. In order to get access to Mattern Drive, either a replat or a variance to the Board of Adjustment would have to be accomplished, all of which the neighbors would get notice of. This is simply an O2 application to allow what has been there as offices for a long time to be considered legal under the zoning code. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward Two. Commissioner Powers, would you like to begin our discussion?
I'm not sure that there really is much discussion. This is a very straightforward zoning case, except for the fact that there is this issue of the limitation of access onto Mattern, and it, as Mr. Box said, is apparently something that's embedded in the plat, and so whatever action we take here today is not going to affect it one way or the other. I don't believe that the people here who may or may not want to speak have any concern about the zoning itself. It's just that access.
Access to Mattern. Well, I guess we can find out. I do have one person signed up to speak, Steve Watson, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Very much. Thank you very much, and good afternoon, and thank you, Ms. Powers, and thank you, Mr. Box. I appreciate you. My name is Steve Watson.
And your address, sir?
Yes, 4629 North Indiana Avenue, and I'm here with my wife Jennifer and our neighbor, Ms. Ann Sherman. I want to first thank Ms. Powers for her very prompt responses to my emails and texts, and I do appreciate her trying to explain to me what we're doing today. And Mr. Box, I think, answered a part of our question here. Our concern has been that we don't have vehicular access to Mattern Drive from Richmond Square. Four years ago, Kendall Weston, I think Weston Kendall, represented by Mr. Box, was proposing vehicular access at that time. And so we're concerned when we got notice in the mail that they were rezoning that this may resurface. From what I understand from Mr. Box today is that is a plat prohibition, and that would have to be taken up at a later time, in which time we, as the public, would be able to come forward to you and present any of our concerns or challenges. Am I stating that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Watson. Is there anyone else here wishing to be heard on item four? That's PC 10854. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners before we vote? Seeing none, Commissioner Powers?
I'll move approval of item number four, PC 10854.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval to City Council for PC 10854, and we will await a second. Commissioner Hinkle is on the ready to second this motion. Well, then, we can, we can go ahead and have a voice, the voice vote on this item. The motion before the commission, again, is to recommend approval of PC 10854 to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. How do you vote, Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Commissioner Claire votes yes. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Gauvine?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries and is passed. We are now in line for item six.
Item six is the Oklahoma Riverfront Redevelopment Project Plan Amendment.
Good afternoon, everybody. Joanna McSpadden, I'm with the city's finance department. Some of you may recall that I was here a few months ago with the same item. So we have a new attorney working with us, and she had a keen eye and noticed that I had some scribner's error in the attached project plan amendment that I attached with the item a few months ago. We've corrected those. She also noted that we didn't clearly state that we were amending the budget with this amendment on the, written that, and we're asking you to reconsider that recommendation again. As a reminder, the amendments that we're proposing for the Oklahoma Riverfront Redevelopment, do we have the presentation for this one? I can walk through it if I need to. It's not attached to that. That'll work. So this is the, these are the proposed changes to the project plan area. The red hash mark is the existing project plan area, and then we're proposing to expand that. We've got some expectations for additional revenue over the next eight to nine years, and we just wanted to expand the area in which we can use those funds. So all of the information that I presented at the last meeting is still accurate. Nothing has changed with that. It was just the attachments that we wanted to make sure that we correct.
Makes sense to me. Any questions or comments from commissioners as far as this change? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval, City Council, for the Oklahoma Riverfront Development Project Plan Amendment.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend a City Council approval of the Oklahoma Riverfront Redevelopment Project Plan Amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Powers seconds the motion. We'll have a voice vote. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Gauvine?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item seven.
This is SPUD 1478, application to rezone 2529 West Eubank Street from R1 to SPUD 1478.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, who's also here with us, this is an application for an SPUD that would allow for an exhibit that you're about to see. There we go. Could you show the site plan, Jared? So what is reflected on the site plan is essentially what's already there. There is the main house, and then there is a garage apartment kind of accessory dwelling unit. So what we seek to do with the spud is very similar to what we've done many times over the last several months in the Corps, where we simply allow the ability to have the two dwelling units on site. There were some protest letters that were submitted. When we attempted to meet with them, we were told that they didn't have any interest in meeting with us, which is fine. I do think that there was some confusion perhaps with the way that the wording of the spud exists. So what we allow for is multifamily. However, when you read it, it's limited to two dwelling units. So it'd be limited to the house and then, of course, the accessory dwelling unit in back. We further limit the spud to one story in height to keep it consistent with the area. So what this spud would allow for is to allow what is already there to remain in a very similar manner to what happens all over the city, where you have the front house and the back house. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff does recommend approval. This is in the urban medium conference of plan designation, and there are no technical evaluations.
Thank you. This is in Ward Two. Commissioner Powers, would you like to begin our discussion?
Yes, I, there were indeed four, I believe, letters of protest that were submitted on this matter, and so in response to those or in consideration of those, there were a number of things that we discussed about this. It is unfortunate that when notice goes out on something like this, you know, it's this multifamily, I think immediately people start thinking about apartment complexes and so on. This really is just two single-family units. Both of the buildings are already there. Those are the, what's going to remain there. I asked for some language in the MDS that would ensure that the structures are limited to one story in height, so that, you know, there's not the idea that maybe at some point in the future they'll be scraped and something bigger will be built. And there were just a couple of things I wanted to touch on, mostly by way of, I hope, reassurance to the neighbors. You know, the way we, the way we draft our master design statements, they always often make reference to parts of the code that's not readily transferable for, or translatable to some people. I want to make sure that it's understood that there's not going to be any, there aren't going to be any dumpsters on this site, that it's strictly, you know, big blue trash collection, that there is sufficient parking on-site off-street for the number of units that are being proposed. What else? And yeah, it's just that there, the buildings that are there are the ones that are going to be utilized here. So nothing really new or different is going to happen on the site, so, other than possibly that it's going to be improved somewhat.
I did want to ask for, and this can be for the applicant or for you, Commissioner Powers, and you all's discussions, just if there is anything that we need to do to ensure that we are referencing those two structures, that, you know, that it's just those two existing structures. Because I know it says, well, it says in, on page two of our staff report, that multifamily residential is limited to two dwelling units, but do we need any additional language that verifies for our applicants that it is indeed the intention to just limit those two units to the house that's there and the accessory dwelling unit in the back?
So I think we've done that by permitting them to remain. What we've done is, in the event that there was, say, a fire or something else in which those buildings were lost, anything that were to be built back would be limited to one story in height, and again, limited to two, so that it would match what's there now. So, yeah, we will keep the buildings, but in the event that there was a need to rebuild, it's limited to what is there now in terms of height and all those things.
Gotcha.
So I'm confident that we've accounted for that.
So I know there are people here who probably want to be heard on this item.
Mm-hmm. I think we have several. We can begin with Nicole Harvey. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Nicole Harvey, and my address is 2537 West Eubank Street. I'm two houses over from the applicant. Well, first, I'd like to state, just for the clarity of the record, that the structure that is currently being proposed to be turned into a dwelling unit is not, has not historically ever been used in that manner, is my understanding. It's currently a workshop and garage. Is that correct?
If we're, you'd have to.
Right. So it was used as a storage unit, is what was responded as?
Yeah.
Okay. So just to clarify, there is going to be a change in the way the structure's being utilized?
Go ahead, and would you mind coming to the microphone? Just so we can all be having the same conversation.
Yeah, so there's two structures. The desire is to make an accessory dwelling unit in the back.
So to make one, not to use the one that's currently being, that's currently there?
To convert the existing structure to an accessory dwelling unit.
So to convert, convert something that's already there. Okay. So historically on our street, I'm not aware of any other structure. We are not a street that has apartment dwellings. We are a post-World War II unit of building that was built on the trench track post-World War II structures. So we have a mixture of streets that are one-lane parking and two-lane that have been added after the fact, and we have a mixture of garages that are attached to the buildings and are behind the buildings as one, usually traditionally one garage, sometimes two. The majority of the houses on the street do not use their garages. They use them as storage because of the sizes of the house. So a lot of people do park on the street. So what we're really talking about here is adding an additional person or persons living on the property, which will add to the number of cars that are on the street. We have issues currently with FedEx and Amazon drivers having to back into our street. We do not have a cul-de-sac, which per your subdivision regulations, 5.32 K2, permanent dead-end roads, actually does talk about the need for cul-de-sacs on dead-end streets, which we don't have. I'm assuming that's because those were, the street was developed before these regulations were put in place. But our street is quite long. I don't know if it meets the regulations, which is listed here, which actually talks about the limit in length according to design standards. I don't know what those limits are, but we do have a relatively long street with no turnaround accessible. And as I mentioned earlier, streets, all of the street driveways are either one or two-car width, so it's really difficult for people to turn around, and that's for city services, emergency services, and, like I said, delivery drivers. So we would be talking about adding additional residents with cars onto our street, which may make that difficult for us to have a livable street. So that's my biggest concern. I have no, we have a wonderful mix of residents on our street, as it relates to rental units versus residents who own their property. For me, that's not the issue here. The issue is parking and safety as it relates to our narrow one-way street, or dead-end street. So that's all I have as it relates to my statements.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So what I would say about that is, that would be a concern for me, too.
Okay.
If they were not able to provide sufficient parking on-site.
Yeah, so my question would just be, how many times do people actually do two-to-two cars? So like their proposal, if you want to pull up their, one of their design documents have the two cars, like, back-to-back. People just don't do that. They're typically going to park one in the street, and then the one that's going to go behind that, that's assuming, based on their structure designs, that that's actually going to be just one resident living in the back, which, I mean, it may be, and it may be two cars. So that's possibly adding two cars to our street that's already just really congested. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for hearing me.
Next, we will hear from Maggie Eklund, and I apologize if I mispronounced your And please begin by giving us your name and address for the record, and you have, you have five minutes to address the commission.
Yes, sir. Can you come to my right? I second everything that Nicole said. I had some of the same things. And that did alarm me that, I've lived there for 23 years. The lady that just died, she lived there for over 50, and her husband passed away over 10 years ago. That was always a garage that he built. He was a woodworker. He built cabinets, and it has never been used for anything other than a woodworking garage. And he didn't ever pull his truck to the back either. His son would come and help him unload any lumber or anything he needed. So I know that documentation. I've lived there a long time. Okay, I second, we don't have a cul-de-sac. We're all the time having, the trucks do have to back down because we've reported them, they've backed up into the taller yards at the end. I have pictures here that I can give to you, and I also have a petition signed by 21 neighbors on the block. We do not need any more cars parking on the block, and what happens is most of the dri- When you stack two cars in them, they're actually into the ordinance of the street. In her house, in this house in particular, she always had one on that side. It goes from the far right of the driveway. It's 18 feet long. The standard for a double-wide nowadays is 20, as mine is across the street. There is a carport, I guess he's going to remove. Anyhow, it's 18 feet. Even anybody that ever came to visit or anything, as noted in the picture, there's damage to the right post because they have hit that numerous times. You'd have to have a really small car and whatever, and I contest their conceptual image. That is a conceptual image done by a computer, and that car is not, the way they have it, the three cars would fit in that driveway. And I have the standards on here for these cars of, from small cars, the length and the width, like a small car, five foot, nine inches, most other cars, six foot one, and SUVs, six foot seven. The other thing I wanted to say was turnaround. The way that that is, the second unit at the back would be, there's no, and then he's going to put a fence down there. That will be a good 80 feet to the street. And we already have a radii turnaround, as us, we're careful. And that house, in the years I've lived here, that I know of, in the last year and a half, a car parked in front of her house has been hit four times. These, like I said, these conceptual cars are not scale. I know what scale is. We do not have enough parking for this multifamily units or visitors, and I do not believe that could be controlled. You're not going to, he's not going to control how many people visit, how many kids they have, or what kind of cars they have. We have people on our block, anywhere from disabled to elderly to young. We have young kids now that are playing in the street. We have a lot of dog walkers because it is dead-end. We'd like, we all bought, this is a Steve Pennington addition, it was designed over 75 years ago. We take well care of our, our block. Signees of the petition will leave and have bought or rented houses here because we respect the ranch-style home and the lots. Mr. Pennington is a historic Oklahoma City builder. The properties meet his purpose designed by him. The property at 2529 should not be a spud, should not be rezoned. Most homes on this block have been, not been sold more than three or four times in 75 years. Renters stay unless leaving for homeownership or job relocation. The landlords on the petition also oppose the voting change, the zoning change. It does not benefit our neighborhood. We enjoy our back lots with gardens, animals, and ducks, and chickens, and shed storage, not garage apartments. We do not have one of those on the block. This action could cause more divided properties, causing more cars. How many is enough? How many is enough? I've had my yard run over by trailers that get stuck down there because they don't read the dead-end signs, which there's plenty of them. The one, the one-way in and out is not designed for enough doubling up of housing on properties. A renter told me his landlord is already going to raise his rent due to this. It can also increase the property values, causing increased taxes. We are not a rich neighborhood and object to any and all burdens this rezon can cause. Cars parking and numbers of people cannot be controlled. I have pictures here for you, and I've explained them on the back. I don't think I have time to tell you everything with that, but I, I'm leaving a copy of what I've said in my architectural standards here for you, sir. And in closing, normally, land is distributed through the market. The highest bidder gets it, but the one with the most money isn't necessarily the best plan. If the earth is for everyone, it should be the community that determines who can use it and under what conditions. We oppose, we oppose this rezon and for this land use.
Thank you, Ms. Eklund. And yes, we can distribute that to all of the commission members, but thank you for sharing your comments. Is there anyone else here wishing to be heard? Oh, yes, I do. I have one more person for item seven. Francois Bigot. And again, I apologize for my poor pronunciation of words.
My name is Francois Bigot, and I own...
That was right.
Yes, it was right.
Okay.
And I own the house at 2516 West Eubanks. I've owned it, actually, I think, for more than 20 years, and my objection is the same as the other two people you've heard before. The parking, the fact that the street is a one-way street, well, two-way street, but the size of a one-way, one-way street with a dead-end at the end of two blocks only. So once you're in, you cannot turn around. You have to back out. 21 people signed the petition altogether. There are, I believe, about 30 houses. That's a very large number of people opposed to this project, and I think that speaks for itself. And that's about all I have to say. No, the other thing, the drawing shows three cars. Three cars, again, cannot park there. One of them has to be parking on the driveway approach, which I believe is illegal.
Anything else, Ms. Bigot?
That's it.
Thank you so much for coming to visit with us today. Is there anyone else here wishing to be heard on, on this item? Item seven, S.P.U.D. 1478. Go ahead, Mr. Box.
Briefly. So I think it's important that we, we make sure that we focus on the fact that this is urban medium. My understanding, this is under the new code, is to allow these types of single-story accessory dwelling units by right moving forward. We talk about affordable housing almost every single city council meeting, and one of the ways that I think that the city's going to be able to start to move towards achieving some element of affordable housing is to allow things like this, to allow not, not the big expensive apartment complexes, but accessory dwelling units. And these do exist all over the city. I live in one of the historical neighborhoods in this city, and there are garage apartments on every single lot in my neighborhood. And in my neighborhood, almost every driveway, in fact, every driveway that I can think of is a single-lane driveway. So the ability to have cars parked in the driveway is something that happens. Now, this driveway is actually shown to be double-loaded, so we actually could have side-by-side. It is a public street. Mr. Zitzel had the ability to check on the city's website. Eubanks is 26 feet wide, so it is a city-standard street in terms of width, but we don't have a single-lane driveway. We have a double-lane driveway that will accommodate the ability to have cars that will be for these structures there. So again, it's urban medium. My understanding, and Jeff can correct me, but my understanding is, one of the goals of the new code is to allow, in the urban medium designation, to allow these to be a by-right ability in zoning districts. So that is how we are going to be able to achieve some of the goals of providing housing, especially housing in the core. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. It's compatible with the cop plan. There are no TEs.
Thank you. Then I guess we just need to have our own discussion for commissioners at this point. Commissioner Powers?
Well, you know, I very much sympathize with the neighborhoods and the neighborhood residents in this case. I happen to live on a quite narrow street. People in my neighborhood are always doubled up in their driveways. But we also have a lot of people out walking their dogs and their kids, and, you know, it's, it is an issue to have traffic. One of the advantages, I think, of being on a street that doesn't circulate is that people, if they're even halfway aware of the dead-end signs, you know, maybe only make that mistake once, once you get in there. If it's difficult to get out, it's not someplace, you're not cutting through and so on. Separate and apart from the issue of what the code update may or may not provide for someday, I think we are all focused right now on achieving a density that is, you know, consistent with its context so that we can provide more housing at, you know, affordable is, you know, almost like a code word, but, I mean, just reasonable. Rents are going up, and to find a, a way to provide housing for people. For me, will not surprise any of you to hear this, the idea of having two single-family dwelling units on a single lot is a much preferred method to any kind of, you know, high-rise or multi-story housing coming into a single-family residential neighborhood. I do not find this to be at all problematic in this particular case. They're not adding anything to the lot that's not already there, other than, you know, some open space and so on, in terms of the building itself. I realize that it's not currently a dwelling unit, and it will be in the future, but they're, they're not, you know, covering more of the lot with concrete, et cetera. I, I am in favor of this application. I would be very pleased to hear other comments and answer questions if I can from any of the other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I will say, I'm sorry.
Please.
At this point, normally in these, in these hearings, I would recommend that we continue this case and take some time and have a meeting with the neighbors. They have not indicated that they are open to that, but I would certainly be willing to make that recommendation again here. If there are questions that can be answered, or if, if providing more information, you know, will help assuage any of their concerns, I think that would be a great thing. And I would strongly recommend that the applicant do it. I don't know whether these folks who are here, I mean, they've brought us this petition, so I guess to some extent they feel comfortable representing the, the views of their neighbors. But if they feel comfortable agreeing or to a, a meeting to discuss the matter, then, you know, of course, I would recommend that we do that.
I'd be open to meeting between now and council. We made multiple attempts and were told to go away. And so at this point, my client has spent a bunch of money getting ready and appearing here today, taking off to come down here. I stand ready, willing, and able to go meet between now and city council. We have probably two months because of the holidays, so I don't know that it's proper at this point to defer when we made multiple attempts to meet.
Commissioner Levine?
Well, I was gonna, I mean, my personal opinion as an architect, and I agree with increased density in urban medium. They have noted it's a 22-foot-wide drive. That's part of the requirements in the MDS. So you can comfortably park two cars in that driveway, probably four, I believe, with the depth that's there if they had to. So I really don't think the parking requirement is the driving, driving factor here. People are allowed to park on the street as they do, and I have no issue with that. That's, that's what happens in the core of a city. So I also am in support of this case despite, you know, valid concerns of the neighbors, but I don't think that this particular proposal is contributing to the problems that already exist on, on the two-block-long dead-end street without the turnaround. That's not part of their remit in this project, so.
I would say that generally, I'm, I'm the first to agree with you, Commissioner Powers, that let's have a discussion, let's ensure that we have these conversations, and I, I do think a conversation should continue. But the issue that I've identified, at least in listening to this, is it's twofold. One, there is the concern from our neighbors that there just shouldn't be accessory dwelling units, period, in this neighborhood, and so there's that belief. And then, secondly, there's the issue about the cars being parked potentially on the street. I think our, our, our job on this commission is to interpret the, the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan clearly tells us that we have an obligation to, to invest in multiple housing types. This type of housing of using accessory dwelling units is appropriate, especially given the, the other uses around it. So for, for me, at least in our review, the idea of having an accessory dwelling unit here is completely appropriate. I think on the second issue of parking, because I have family members who used to live on Eubanks, and I've driven it and seen it multiple times, I do know that the traffic is an issue. I do know that the street parking is an issue. And if, if we weren't, if this application did not include a widening of the driveway to accommodate the additional parking, I would vote no. So since it addresses that problem directly, and since it's consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan, I'm in support of this item. So I, I think that, I definitely support a continued conversation between our neighbors and the applicant. I think that that's a good idea between now and city council. I think that it's important for our neighbors to understand that regardless of whether this commission recommends that, recommends approval or recommends denial, this application is still going to the city council for further review. So if there has not been a conversation with Commissioner Coop, with Councilman Cooper, I would highly recommend that that occur as well. Any other comments? Commissioner LaForte?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm going to reiterate most of what you said, but with a little extra emphasis, which is that I, too, you know, looking at the street, it's a long street, it could be, could be tough with the, the trafficking getting through. I haven't been on it, but I'm hearing what you're saying, and I'm seeing it. I want to reiterate, too, that yes, we, affordable housing is a need. Because it's limited to two units, maybe I can get there, but it wouldn't be for every single lot on this street. It, because you've expressed issues with the street and the parking, if everybody, if every one of these had two units that was livable, everybody's in parking on the street, it would be a problem. I pulled up on the county assessor the picture that is there of this house that wasn't staged. There's clearly a car on one side, and there's clearly room for another car on the other side, and it can get from front to back. This particular house and this lot looks like it will not, it, it has a great potential of not making the parking and the street worse. However, if this were, as you just said, it is, this particular lot looks like it is appropriate to help with our housing issues, it could accommodate some cars. The applicant appears to have just bought this recently, so I would make sure, the applicant is aware, or anybody else, to not just go out and start buying up lots on the street thinking we're going to approve every one of these, because what you just said, this one looks like it does not have as many issues as the, the protesters are raising. It could, it could, but it looks like it's, it's possible with the parking situation in the driveway. So I'm a little closer on, yes, I want more housing, and this street might be good for it, but not every single lot. So I can get there on this one because of the particular setup, but I'm not, I don't know if any of us, especially with what you just said, too, are ready to approve multifamily limited to two on every lot on this street.
And, and I do take serious, and I appreciate that, Commissioner LaForte. I, I do take, I think it is interesting that, at least in the discussions that are happening now with the, the update to the code, that potentially accessory dwelling units could be allowed by right. I do think that's interesting, but I won't believe that it's the law until it's passed, and I think we're years away from that actually happening. So I hesitate to rely on that, at least, this idea that, that every, eventually every, every house could have that on this lot until the code actually changes. So any other comments from commissioners?
I'm curious from the protesters. I saw lots of heads shaking and saying, no, we didn't have a chance to meet. If there is anything that could be accomplished in a meeting, I mean, what are you willing to give up and what are you willing to succeed? Because I don't see how this can change. I mean, not that I'm against a meeting, but I don't doubt Mr. Box when he says that, he tried to get a meeting, and I don't doubt you guys when you say that he didn't. All I'm saying is, is there anything that you could talk about that would ease your mind about this application, other than it is what it's going to be? There's not much they can change there in the spirit of what they're trying to do.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I'll be very prepared, so I mean, there's not much conversation that we can have to rectify the issue.
You'd have to come to address, address this from the microphone, but we've already had, you've already had an opportunity to address the commission. But I, I do think that, that if we want to vote on both motions, I mean, we really could. We could vote to decide on, on recommending a continuance for the purposes of a community meeting.
This is Commissioner Powers' word, and I'm going to rely on her knowledge of this and her street and, you know, follow her lead. So that was just a question that I had.
You know, in this case, I, I do, I am aware that there was an attempt to reach out in response to the very first letter of protest that was filed, filed, and, and that, that particular attempt, at least, was rebuffed. I mean, as recently as just before this meeting, I think Mr. Box attempted to talk to the applicants or to the protestants, you know, in the hallway. They didn't seem to want to do that. I, you never know what can be solved by a meeting until you're there. That's just a reality.
True.
But I, I think in this case, the applicant has met their requirement for due diligence there. I do believe they should remain open to meeting between now and council. And, you know, I'm always reluctant to hand off a case like this with protest unresolved, but I, you know, I, I'm having a hard time seeing what it would accomplish for us to defer this.
Same. Again, I identify the two issues. There's the issue of whether, whether we should even allow an accessory dwelling unit at all, period, or whether, whether this, the impact that this has on parking. And so I don't know where the compromise position really is. Either you're for it or you're not for it. So, especially... So, especially since they are providing the additional parking.
Well, so, I'll take a deep breath. If there aren't any further comments to be made or questions to be asked, and move approval of item number seven, S.P.U.D. 1478.
The motion before the commission is to recommend to city council approval of S.P.U.D. 1478. It's been seconded by Commissioner LaFarge. Please cast your votes when available.
Came up good for us.
And the motion passes. And again, I will remind our neighbors that you can still reach out to Mr. Box and the applicant between now and the probably two months that it will take before the city council. Actually, here's this case. I would also strongly recommend that you reach out to Councilman Cooper and have this discussion with him as well. And if there's anything that I can do to help facilitate those conversations, I'm happy to do that as well. We're now ready for item eight.
Item eight is case S.P.U.D. 1479, application to rezone 1,000 Northwest 50th Street from S.P.U.D. 1367.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present?
Herbie Patel, 410 North Walnut Road, or North Walnut Avenue, I'm sorry. This is an amendment to a S.P.U.D. that was approved in April, S.P.U.D. 1367, and the only change we're asking for is to add the parking lot use as a principal use. Half of the lot is already a parking lot, and our client, Hideaway Pizza, just wants to extend it to the site. We did reach out to all the neighbors to the south that would be directly affected by this, and heard back from one neighbor who was in S.P.U.D.
Okay. Thank you. And I think we might be having some microphone issues, so I do apologize. I do apologize for that. Commissioner Powers, this is Ward Two. Would you like to begin our discussion?
This is a real simple adjustment to an S.P.U.D. that we heard quite recently, and that was fully negotiated at the time. I believe that the persons sort of most directly affected by the zoning at the time actually expressed some preference that if it would just stay a parking lot, that would be better. As it turns out, that's the use they want to make of it. When I first saw this, I thought, "Oh, surely, you know, they've got shared parking on that corner, and why would they need this?" But I happened to stop by the Hideaway one Friday evening at about 5:30, 6 o'clock, and it was hard to find a place to park, so I get it. I don't have a problem at all with this change. It's my understanding that the S.P.U.D. that we so recently approved stays absolutely in place, it just allows for this use as a parking lot as well, so I'm okay with that.
That certainly makes sense to me. Any questions for the applicant from commissioners?
Is anyone signed up?
And we have no one signed up to speak, but I will ask if there's anyone here wishing to be heard on this item, item eight, S.P.U.D. 1479.
I think that's very indicative, because, you know, the development of that corner has been carefully watched by the neighborhood, and they have participated vigorously at every turn. So, the fact that there's no one here in protest or with questions, I think, is a good indication.
A good sign. In that case, any other comments from commissioners? I think you're up, Commissioner.
I'll move item eight, S.P.U.D. 1479, move to approve.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 13...
14.
14, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong one, the wrong number. S.P.U.D. 1479 to city council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes, and I do want to thank our staff for bringing us a new microphone as well.
Very nice.
We're now in line for item nine.
This is case S.P.U.D. 1483, application to rezone 2508 Northwest 39th Street from O2 and R1.
Is there an applicant present?
My name is Brad White, and I'm the owner of 2508 and 2504. We purchased it sometime last year, and when we purchased the property, we thought that it was already zoned for C3. As you look on Google Earth, and when we observed the property previously, it was a business that shipped cars. So, the parking lot there held about 52 cars there in the back lot, and it was used for that for many years. So, as we bought it, we found out that it wasn't. So, we're here before you today to try to get it zoned properly. It was, they were homes. Everything on the block running up the street is now commercial property, except for, I believe, these two properties. It is the closest piece of property to the highway, so it's not really, it's used as a residence anymore, as standing in the front yard is, the decibel level is higher than it is at the airport. So, it's really, the whole front yard has been made into a parking lot prior to us buying it, so it is set for retail. It is an open structure inside, so it is made for retail, or was designed, I guess, previously, somebody had built it that way. We've gone through and repainted the house, cleaned the structure up. When we took the structure over, when we went to the property, we found people camping on the porch, and they had been for several months, living on the porch, because it had been a vacant property for, I guess, about six to eight months. The gentleman that ran the property lived next door. He was an elderly man, was no longer able to take care of it. So, immediately, we've made improvements to the neighborhood. We're asking that we're able to continue to make those improvements. The type of development we want to do there is similar to what's taking place on 23rd or 16th Street. Quite a renaissance with some of those older homes that have been turned into businesses, and that's what we'd like to do. I'd like to thank Councilman Powers for coming out and taking a look at the property and walking it with us, and she's been very helpful in the process. And again, we're just here today to see about getting this rezoned.
Thank you. Commissioner Powers, it's your day.
I want to thank Sarah Welch for coming and meeting with us. We did meet on-site. We got a, this was originally filed as a straight zoning request, and so I did take a hand in helping them get their master design statement pulled together, and staff helped them get their, you know, conversion from straight zoning to S.P.U.D. worked out so that we could get this thing heard. We were focused on getting them the zoning that they needed to do, what they wanted to do with the property. And so, after we got our MDS drafted, we met again on-site. Sarah met with us, we talked about signage and that sort of thing. And so, I'm satisfied very much with this application. It is an odd site. It is, you know, faces into a highway. On the other hand, you know, there's residential property across 39th that kind of, you know, shows its back to this property, and so it's not really a sort of classically commercial property, but it certainly will serve them for what they want to do with it. And so, we were focused on getting that worked out. Oddly enough, the piece of it that's zoned R1 is the part that they wanted to be commercial, and the piece of it that's zoned O2 is the part that they wanted to be short-term rental. So, it had to be, you know, divided in tracks and dealt with separately. But I think we've got it all worked out. They're happy, I'm happy. I haven't heard from any of the neighbors anywhere. Initially, their neighbor to the west had thought perhaps they would join the properties and go forward, but they decided early on to not to pursue that. So, what we have here is Mr. Pucio and Mr. White's property, and we're dealing with it on its own.
Okay. My only question is about the use unit for eating establishments, fast food. Does that allow the order windows?
No, it does not, and we had a lot of discussion about that.
And we have no plans for that, nor do we, we're not trying to add a drive-through
or anything like that, or pickup window or anything, so.
And they were very clear. They'll leave that to the next generation, you know, whoever, what happens to the property 20 years from now or whatever. That's not their vision for this property, so.
Yes.
So, and I have a question about the home sharing use. I know you haven't had any protests, but it seemed odd. So, what does the home sharing use mean? It's really small structure, correct?
No, we own both properties. There's two right next door to each other. One of them, we actually want to convert into an Airbnb. It's a, there's several hotels that are there in the district. It's very close to Penn Square Mall, it's two minutes from downtown. We feel like we can have a really nice Airbnb that's usable for folks that want to come in, stay that close to downtown, that close to shopping, and be, have access to the highway, because it's right there. So, it's easy to find if you are from out of town. We're actually doing a house divided. It's a two-bedroom house. The house is, one room is set for OU, one is OSU. The kitchen is set to thunder colors, so it's, you know, a unique little stay for somebody that wants to come in and stay.
They have provided for a 25-foot open space across the back of the property. They're gonna provide screening across the back of the property, so there should be very little, if any, impact on the residences that they back up to.
Yeah, currently, in the backyard across it is just a chain-link fence that has been pretty much laid down, because I think the homeless were using it, or somebody was using it as a path-through. We're gonna construct a stockade fence to provide more privacy for the neighbors behind us, and also stop that foot traffic that's coming through, and eliminate some of the just vagrant traffic. And I say that with all respect to the homeless, because I know it's a big problem, so.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on S.P.U.D. 1483? Seeing none, Commissioner Powers.
I'll move approval of item number nine, S.P.U.D. 1483.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1483 to city council. Let's see if there's a second. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes, and this is, again, great, great work from everyone. Thank you so much, and thank you, Commissioner Powers, for your efforts to get this changed. We're now in line for item 10.
Item 10 is S.P.U.D. 1484, application to rezone 2900 North Portland Avenue from C3 and R1.
Is there an applicant present?
Hello, my name is Threes Brott. I am representing my father, Philip Porter, who couldn't be here, for 2900 North Portland Avenue. Pretty straightforward on our goals. We just want to convert it to a commercial so we can build a building there to put all of our excess vehicles that have been all over the property for quite some time. Pretty much it.
Okay. So, this is, surprise, surprise, back to Ward Two. Are we gonna start doing that on agendas, is like stacking them by ward? Is that, is that like the strategy now?
We used to do that.
Okay.
This is, this was a case, this is my surprise case of the week, because when I first saw this, I thought, "This is a mess, it's never gonna work. Extending commercials is just a terrible idea, the neighbors are gonna hate it." But, it happens. There is a neighbor, is Mr. Silver here today?
Yeah.
Who lives across the street. He has been very active in cases in the area, you know, advising, he's lived there a very long time, he knows a lot about what's going on around there. They live across the street and will look most directly into the piece of property, the vacant piece of property, that is really what this case is kind of all about. And he was in favor of this, and explained why, and we talked through it. This is a business where people bring their cars and leave them. Currently, as you can see from that picture, they are parked all over the front of the property. It's just a mess. It's unsightly, no offense. And so, you know, the idea that that was just gonna spread east, I was, no way I was gonna go for that. But what they really want to do, and the whole point and purpose of this rezoning application, is to permit them to build a building that will house those cars while they're being worked on. This is not sort of a typical body shop kind of place. What they do here really has to do with the computerized workings of a car. And so, the vehicles have to be there, and they have to be parked, but there's not a lot of the kind of noise and smell and all that kind of thing that's associated with a body shop generally. We talked at great length about what they very specifically needed, and what they were agreeing to, which is that all of those cars are moving indoors. And Mr. Silver was very helpful. We met on-site a couple times. This one, boy, she's sly. The first time I showed up, she had these two little white puppies. After about two minutes, I had one of them, and she, we were just petting the puppies and talking about, "Oh, sure, this'll work."
You've got some new suggestions for Mr. Box. Bring us puppies, maybe we'll, you know, vote for the things he brings to us.
It really works.
Got adopted. The other one still needs a home, for anybody who wants to adopt a dog.
They're super cute, I'll just tell you. But anyway, they're very willing to be reasonable about signage and all those kind of things. We're gonna face the doors to the west so that they're not visible from the street. The building will actually sort of be blocked by the building in front of it from Portland. Portland is currently scheduled for a redesign, streetscape kind of project down through there. So, some of the pieces of the puzzle, access points and that kind of stuff, will work with city as that happens, make sure it matches up with their plan for the area. Landscaping will go kind of around that so that it all fits together. I am very much in favor of this project at this point. I'm sure we have some questions we can answer. The building's gonna be, you know, brick, and, you know, they are very invested in this, and they're willing to do what it needs to be done to make it work, so.
That's good to hear, because my number-one concern when I read it was, how, why would we want to extend more?
Mine too.
Yeah.
Mine too.
Automotive use, but this is, this is great. I think this is a great opportunity. I'm glad we'd be moving the cars indoors. Any questions or comments from commissioners on the applicant?
I have a question. How big is the building?
Well, that is not being specified within the MDS, because it's gonna be as big as they can possibly make it, given whatever utilities there might be, and so on.
But does this building, by building it, take away their ability to park cars outdoors, or are we just gonna end up with a building full of cars and then the same amount of cars out?
Says several different places.
Oh, sorry.
The whole point and purpose of it is that there won't be any more cars parked outside.
Yeah, and we have...
Oh, I think it's a great idea.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
We have space inside of the building where we also park cars, so we're not gonna park like every single one in there, so most of it will still be inside of our current building.
Yeah, they, this is gonna be, the building that's there is kind of a unique one, you can kind of see from the picture. It's sort of a U-shape, so they can drive into it, and there are garage doors to the sort of interior courtyard-ish space there, all the way around. So, they have quite a lot of working space, but those that are gonna be there for a longer period of time simply will not be outside anymore.
Yes, and we have 10 bays, and those are occupied by cars being currently worked on. So, we try to, you know, get cars in and out as soon as possible.
Sure.
But I think that's a valid question, is are we just adding to the, you know, to there being more cars just around in general, or are we alleviating the problem?
I didn't catch that part in the application, so.
So, the language, let me find it really quick for you. The language is, "The purpose of this S.P.U.D. is to expand an existing automotive repair business in order to provide indoor parking for vehicles being repaired, awaiting repair, and repaired vehicles awaiting retrieval." So, then, that specific requirement is, you know, touched on again and again as a requirement.
Well, for what it's worth, apparently, I missed it too, so we can...
It's very fine.
Oh, I'm not against the application at all, I'm just making sure we weren't building a building to exacerbate the problem.
I do have Mr. Silver signed up to speak. Mr. Silver, do you still wish to address the commission?
I live at 3620 Northwest 28th. Lived there for 48 years. My wife owns the house next door to us at 3624, so we actually own the three lots immediately south of the proposed property. We are the most affected, if you will. Have the same concerns that you gentlemen expressed. Have the same concerns that you gentlemen expressed. And when this first started, I was concerned about this as well. One recent day, there were 39 cars. On a Sunday, there were 39 cars parked outside of that building. So my concerns were the same as yours, is this would just be more cars. The applicant's been there since, I think, 1984. I'm not sure. It's been a good neighbor. They keep regular business hours. I'm not concerned about noise, odors, any of those things. They keep regular business hours. The cars are the issue. When we started this, I was opposed to it. But meeting with the applicant, several meetings with Ms. Powers, they're onsite, we've negotiated this thing to where I believe that we actually have a design that will be beneficial to the neighborhood. Normally, I would oppose this vigorously, any intrusion into our neighborhood. But due to the orientation of this property and the commercial property to the north, I actually think this will benefit our neighborhood rather than detract from it. And I would recommend that you pass this.
That's great. Thank you so much, Mr. Silver. And, you know, proves your point yet again, Commissioner Powers, about maybe we should just have a conversation and see where we end up. So, proof of that.
Never know.
I mean, I, I just want to add, I mean, the intent is that all the cars are parked inside. I just wonder if there isn't, you know, and they're going to build, they want to build the biggest building that they can. But there's also construction costs. I just wonder if there isn't something that we can do to limit, you know, say, you know, at any time, a maximum number of cars, whatever that, whatever, whatever we think is appropriate, working with the owner, you know, a maximum number of cars are to be parked, you know, outside. Because we know, you know, people got to come and get their car. They maybe can't get there. It gets ended up, you know, left overnight or whatever. But I'm just wondering if there isn't something that we can just try and do to get a little bit more detail.
There is language in the master design statement that says, "All vehicles parked onsite, being repaired, awaiting repair, and repaired vehicles awaiting retrieval shall be parked indoors." I don't think it gets any plainer than that.
I mean, that's, that means that they've got to be in, inside at all times so that even, I mean, even a visitor to the business, it sounds to me, would be required to park inside.
Well, if, if they're a visitor to the business, you just like to come in and see if this is going to work or whatever. I don't think that is a vehicle that's parked onsite to be repaired, awaiting repair, or repaired vehicle awaiting retrieval. So if I want to visit the site and go in and talk to somebody, I think that's appropriate, but you're only going to be there for a matter of, what, minutes or hours at the most. My, my hesitancy with talking about it being overnight is that we don't want cars parked outdoors all day, you know. So they do have 10 bays. If people are there, you know, for a shorter visit, they can be parked in there. If they're longer term, they'll be parked in this big building, so.
I mean, I was going to point out. They also have an extensive kind of backlot area. So I don't think we want to start completely across the board prohibiting all outdoor vehicles. Are they visible from the street or from the neighbors? Or, or are they screened? So if we're not worried about cars that are in the back, are we? I mean, I wouldn't be anyways. Questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item, SPUD 1484? Seeing none, Commissioner Powers.
I'd like to thank again Sarah Welch for her help on this. We've met several times. She met with us at least once and it was very helpful.
Sarah's awesome. I don't know why she's not here getting all this praise that she deserves.
I don't know either. She's probably doing something much more enjoyable. I, I will move to approve item number 10, SPUD 1484.
The motion is to recommend approval of SPUD 1484 to City Council. And it has been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 11.
Item 11 is KC 7509, preliminary plat of Bella Rose, located north of Northwest 150th Street and east of North MacArthur Boulevard with a variance to section 5.4, .2, .e, .5.
Thank you.
Dean Colita with Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street, representing the applicant. This project was actually approved, preliminary plat, on June 9th. And it was for the full 20 acres. On this one, we, after we did some further field investigations, we found some wetlands on the property. You could see there on the south side. So we basically had to split the property up and basically make it a 15-acre tract. Everything else remains the same. We just had to basically shrink it down. There is a sidewalk variance for just to be on one side of the street and the other. It's an age-restricted senior living type facility gated. So, you know, he has three of these right now and they just don't use the sidewalks to kind of walk the street, low-traffic area. And so we will connect the sidewalk to the clubhouse and make it all accessible and connect it to the main 150th Street. So it'll still have accessibility, it's just only going to be on one side. So that's where the variance comes in. But it was approved last time and we just had, basically had to shrink the site to account for these wetlands that were on the property. We knew they were there, but we didn't know the extensive until we actually did some field surveying, so. And then, you know, pretty much everything else remains the same. Stub roads, connectivity to the north and also to the west and, you know, all the utilities and infrastructure per city standards. So if you've got any questions, if you have any answers.
Thank you. Commissioner Noble, you're up. You've had time at least to be ready for it to be your turn. Commissioner Powers is handing it over.
Thanks. First of all, I guess, ask anyone's here to speak on?
We don't have anyone currently signed up to speak on this one, no.
Okay. And I know this was approved prior and it pretty much is the same. I just, I wanted to ask a few questions and maybe for all of us up here to understand the public, the private street instead of a public street, the amount of right-of-way. And then this really isn't even a public street. It's a public drive. And the kind of reasons for that.
Yeah, you know, so this is age-restricted. Obviously, you know, they're going to be higher-end homes. You know, these residents are kind of want that, you know, gated community look. And obviously with the gated community, it has to be a private street. So that's basically the big concern. We do have emergency access on the north and the west. Those will be gated as well, but emergency vehicles will come in and out. But mainly it's just the kind of feel and look of the neighborhood. You know, this price point in this area, you know, they kind of want that security and having that gated community. So that's, that's the main reason for the gated and the private streets.
Could you maybe explain why the 30-foot right-of-way? And, and just designate them as driveways?
Yeah, I think it's more of an architectural look of how he wants to do it. And, you know, with the sidewalk on one side, he's able to, you know, undulate the property. Are there, the front building setbacks to kind of make more of a nice streetscape along there? But, you know, essentially with the additional easements that are created on outside of the 30-foot, it would essentially serve just like a public right-of-way. So there is additional space there. It's just kind of a, you know, just the road itself was kind of just within that 30-foot access as a private.
And, and the roadway will be 26-foot wide?
Yes, sir, yeah. It'll meet all city standards.
And built to city standards.
Drainage, all city standards, water and sewer as well. So it's just more of a, you know, more of an architectural and feel of the neighborhood. But yes, it'll be all public, up to public standards.
That was going to be my biggest concern, was if it was not going to be built to city standards. And I, I guess the intention, because this is the senior living, is you do want to limit public access.
Correct.
That's an intentional.
Correct.
And I wanted to make, be clear on the sidewalks. So once, so you're, the TE about sidewalks along Northwest 150th Street? That's okay with you guys?
Yeah, we accept all TEs, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, and you will have sidewalks on one side of the street throughout the development?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and so basically it'll be in the interior loop. And so it'll also connect to the, common area B there is where the clubhouse is going to be. So it'll all connect to the clubhouse. And then it'll also come down on the, the west side of the main entrance and connect to 150th. So they have access to the public street. The sidewalk can obviously extend that across 150th, the full width of the property.
Okay. Commissioner Noble?
And the variance is for?
The sidewalk to be on just one side instead of both.
Or I thought it was for addressing on a private drive, but?
Oh, the addressing, yeah, that's, I think that's more or less. I don't know if Jared could speak to that. I think it's kind of a caveat to having a private street. I think it may be a code type of anomaly.
Yeah, so Jared Martin, Planning Department. The variance is for, to be able to name the, the private drives for addressing purposes. The, the sidewalk requirement for private drive just says that they have to meet public works standards. So if it's something that public works approves as far as one side or the other, then that's what they'd be able to do. A, a private street or a public street would be required to have sidewalks on both sides. So a little, little different there.
Okay, well, first we do the variance, so.
Yes, well, let me ask one more time, just to be sure. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item? Item number 11, C-7509. And I think we, we're ready for the, for the variances first.
Recommend approval of variance 5.4, .2, .e, .5.
The motion is to approve a variance to section 5.4, .2, .e, .5 of the subdivision regulations. And give us just one moment. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes on the variance when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for a motion on the item.
Motion to recommend approval for C-5, 7509, preliminary plat of Bella Rose.
And Commissioner Noble moves approval of C-7509. It's been seconded.
Subject to the technical evaluation.
Subject to the technical evaluations. Thank you, Commissioner Claire. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Great, thank you.
We're now in line for item 14.
Item 14 is case PUD 1920, application to rezone 10599 West Britton Road from PUD 1776.
There we go. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is also here with us, as well as Kendall Dillon, who's a civil engineer for this project. So this is likely going to look familiar to most of you. We came through not too long ago and rezoned this as PUD 1776. The track lines in PUD 1776 largely match what we're seeking to do here today. The difference being, at the time, track one was the only track that was able to be serviced by public sewer. Track two was not able to be serviced by public sewer. And so we sought an RA base with half-acre lots to be served by public water, but then to be served by aerobic systems. In fact, I think staff recommended denial of the application because of that. There was concern by some of the neighbors to the east at that time because of the amount of aerobic systems that would be in place. So Mr. Dillon has worked with staff and we are now of the belief that we can service the entire development with public sewer. And so we will have both water and sewer. And so what we seek to do is, track one would be similar to an R1ZL type of standard with track two being a standard R1 standard in the PUD. So you will note that along the east, there is a 60-foot buffer that exists. There is a oil and gas service road. And in talking to the neighbors and looking at some of the emails, one of the concerns raised was the aquifer. Well, because we will now be on public sewer and because we will be extending public water, my belief is that those concerns are now not, should not be of a concern because we will have all public infrastructure. One of the other concerns raised by the, the gentleman behind me, and I expect him to, to get up and talk about this, is there is a desire for the neighborhood to not connect to our neighborhood. Jared, if you could show the aerial perhaps. We show the connection because that's what the, the subregs require. There is a substrate at Northwest 99th Street. We, of course, leave it to discretion of the, the planning commission, but are happy to support the neighbors in their, their effort to, to not connect if that is the desire of the, the planning commission. But we have drawn the plat, which will be the next item you hear, to conform to the subregs, which would have the connection. So with that, there is one TE in the PUD application that we do agree to. And I think overall, this is a much better scenario now that we can bring public sewer to this and not have it served by aerobic systems. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward 1. Commissioner Claire, would you like to begin our discussion?
Pretty straightforward. I know when we heard, saw this a while back, there was the, the concern of the sanitary sewer, water not being available. So at that time, I was really not in favor of, of the previous plan. But now that, you know, public sewer, public water is available, I think this is, is a no-brainer. You know, as far as connectivity goes, you know, it's in the complex. We want to support it. You know, something, sometimes I think something that gets overlooked when we think about connectivity is emergency and disaster access. And, you know, heaven forbid, a big storm come through here and, you know, we got debris all over the roads. I think, I think having that connectivity and just having that potential for additional access through other neighborhoods is important. So I'm, I'm in support of that connection.
Thank you. And certainly there's the benefit, the social benefit as well, being connected. In addition to the, to our comprehensive plan, encouraging those connections between the neighborhoods. Any other questions or comments from commissioners before we hear from our neighbors? Then I will call on, and I, I will apologize in advance for mispronouncing your last name. Leslie Ray?
Sears.
Sears?
Sears, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Sears.
Seasons greetings to the commission. Appreciate you hearing me. They've already expressed some of the information you've. I am Leslie Ray Sears of 10149 Northwest 99th Street, where the sidewalk ends at the Valderra Edition. I also represent a number of my neighbors. You had those signs in your, in your packet. We feel, we feel that, you know, now that they're showing to have 600 homes next to our development, which has a little over 200 homes, that this will markedly change the character of the Valderra and Morgan Crossing Edition. To make this transition easier for the existing neighborhoods and address many of our concerns, we ask that you leave the Northwest 99th Street stub as a dead end, not connecting these two neighborhoods together. The Crafton Toll representative has told me they would not object to leaving this at a dead end. They do not expect there to be much traffic. The picture, do you all have the picture that I, the photograph? Tries to show that there's a 20-foot drop from the end of 99th Street down to the new road that's going to be in the Somerset Edition. That 20-foot drop over a distance of about 200 feet represents about an 11% grade. For, for reference, a wheelchair ramp cannot be more than 8%. So it's going to be an engineering feat to, to create that drop in that connecting road down into Somerset. Emergency vehicles, I can't imagine, I understand the concern about disasters, but I can't imagine any other emergency vehicles are going to meander through Valderra and Morgan Crossing neighborhoods to try and reach Crafton Toll to Somerset Edition. Finally, dead ends are great. Porch pirates hate them. We would have fewer joyriders, and this is going to be a crazy street when it just drops off, drops off a cliff basically at 20 feet. We do appreciate the ability potentially to connect to the new sewer line because no one likes to maintain their own aerobic septic system. In fact, most people don't maintain their own aerobic septic system. So, any questions? Thank you.
I do have one question. If, if the applicant was agreeable, and they seem to be to not provide the connection, but if we maintain the physical connection, but we put a crash gate there, would that be...
That'd be the same thing.
Okay. You'd be open to that?
Right. We initially thought of that, but then when they said that, you know, an option was to just not connect it, we said, well, that's, that's even better. But, yeah, emergency crash gate, be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here, anyone else here wishing to be heard on PUD 1920? Commissioner Claire, on the, any comments on the connectivity? I think that's the only remaining issue for, that's being contested at this point. Go ahead.
So, I mean, perhaps that really is the plat issue, which would be the next item.
Okay.
We can't really, couldn't do anything in the PUD anyways.
Okay. Then, are any, any other questions or comments about that, about the zoning? Commissioner Claire.
Okay. If there's no one else, nothing else to say, I'll move to recommend approval to City Council for PUD 1920.
The motion is to recommend approval of PUD 1920 to City Council. It has been seconded by, let's find out, Commissioner LaForge. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 12.
Item 12 is case C-7508, preliminary plat of Somerset. And this is located east of North Sarah Road and north of West Britton Road.
Thank you.
David, Box 522, Call Core Drive. So this is the plat that goes with the PUD. There are six TEs, all of which we agree to. So in terms of the access, we're, we'd be happy to, I'm going to ask Mr. Dillon to come up and explain what he thinks he can do from an engineering standpoint.
Good afternoon. For the record, Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll. Commissioner Claire, to answer your question, and Mr. Sears was correct, there is about 17, 20-foot fall. So it's going to be a challenge to make it work. However, obviously, trying to meet the subdivision regulations, we've shown it. We'll figure out a way to try to make it work. But if, especially, you know, our subdivision complies with the code without the street stub, I think theirs does as well. However, understanding the connectivity and even more access points, we could potentially offer up, instead of doing a street connection, if it makes it better, we could plat it as a common area and then just put an emergency access drive to connect. Then we could gate it. But we can't gate a, a street if it's going to be public. And all of our streets in this addition are public.
Any questions for Mr. Dillon?
I guess I want to be clear about this. We're not saying it's not possible to connect.
Yeah.
It's, it's possible, but it is going to be, as Mr. Sears says, a little bit of an engineering challenge. So it's, it's a lot of grade. So what it'll, it'll require a lot of fill for us to really elevate that street up. Now, can it be done? Yes. I mean, we'll figure out a way to get it done. But it is, it's going to be an undertaking. So we're completely fine with no connection. But if, you know, if another emergency access point, then we can do it as a common area, put a concrete emergency access, then you would have the ability to gate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd love to hear from staff on this. Any thoughts on the physical barrier created by the change in grade that we should take into consideration when determining whether or not to grant this connection? We can grant the variance. That is a possibility. I, but...
Barry Lodge, Public Works. There are going to be some significant challenges with that. In order for it to be dedicated as a public street, that, the grade for that street cannot exceed 8%. And when you start trying to do 17 to 20-foot of grade change within a couple hundred feet, you're going to wind up with a probably 11 to 12% grade, which, which will have some challenge. It's not going to be an impossible deal, but it would, probably on their, on their east property lines, going to have a road grade that winds up being probably substantially above where the floor of the house would be. So it's going to be an interesting location. But really, the only, as from the city's standpoint, as far as the public street, our main concern is going to be the street grade. That will be our limitation that they be able to achieve that.
Okay. Any other questions for Barry?
I have, I mean, I have a question. I'm not sure if it's directly for Barry, but... So the subdivision, the existing subdivision to, to our east was built with the stub.
Yes.
So that was required at the time that subdivision was constructed. So now we're coming along and we're approving the next subdivision with the whole point of connecting to the stub. So if we start doing this, why are the stubs even required in the first place if, if, if we're going to go back on it now? So I understand we're taking into account the unique challenge of, of a little bit of topography, which I know we're not used to in Oklahoma, but it's, it's a hill, guys. I mean, you build, people build roads on hills, you know? I mean, so I like this idea about common area and a possible solution that could benefit both developments and provide some open space. I think that is an interesting discussion point that maybe we, I'd like to hear a little more about. But I don't think that we should not provide the connection because of the...
Because it's challenging?
That was existing when this was required in the first place, and it's there now, and it's not insurmountable, in my view, at least.
Yeah, and maybe that's something that we should have... I'm not sure, and Jared, maybe you know, you know, when this subdivision to the east was put in, you know, was, was that considered? You know, would there have been a better place to put the connection where there's not so much grade change? So maybe that's something that we can scrutinize a little better in the future. For all I know, maybe, maybe it's very difficult along the entire property line, but I doubt it. I'm sure there might be a better place to have put a connection in. Furthermore, it would seem that maybe a slight redesign of that, of that section of the plat could make it so that you have the grade change over a longer, a longer distance. So, yeah, I, I agree, though, I mean, it does defeat the purpose of making these connections, but it is something that I'll take note of, that when we do require these stubs, you know, look at, look at the amount of grade change, make sure that it's in the right place because that, that can make a big difference. As we see, this is the first time I can recall this grade change being an issue for a connection.
Okay.
So what Kendall's referring to is, when you see the back of lots right here, we would make this part right there a common area so that we could have that gate right there. If it's a public street, we cannot gate a public street. So that's, by making that common area, we have the ability to then put a gate up there and still have that connection for emergency services.
I...
I'm sorry. You're saying you'd still build it the same way. It's just desplat it differently.
Correct.
You'd still build a public street.
Right. It wouldn't, it would be common area rather than a public street. So we could accomplish the gate.
I see. Okay. For me, to me, it's, what's the difference? I mean, if we're going to go ahead and build the street, well, then let's just go ahead and have the connection.
Me too. I'm not enamored of the crash gate idea. What I, what I really am trying to focus in here, I'm so not an engineer, is whether it is safe. I mean, are we talking about such a significant, so we've decided it's not impossible? But is it, I mean, is it going to be safe? I mean, if not, then that's one thing, you know?
No, if we, we will adhere to the city's criteria as far as building it. I think the point is, is Mr. Sears is correct in the sense of there is a lot of drop. So it's going to be fairly challenging on our end to, to meet the criteria to make the connection work. But obviously, understanding the sentiment of the planning commission normally in their subdivision regulations, we've shown it that way with the intent of connecting. So I think from where we sit, obviously, our plan shows to connect it. But just as another piece of information, maybe we're overcomplicating it. On behalf of what Mr. Sears said, there is a significant drop. And so it certainly is not, we're not opposed to not having the connection. In addition to that, again, not to overcomplicate it, but if the connection, if there's a desire with the commission to still have an emergency access connection, but not vehicular, everyday connection, then we can structure that by not plating right-of-way, plat it as common area. And instead of building a city street, we could do it as a concrete, a 20-foot emergency access. And we can even utilize a little steeper grades on those to help on the design side. And then that would still, since it's common area and a private drive, would allow a gate so that everyday traffic couldn't flow through there, but you still have another emergency access point if needed.
Kendall, it looks like with the exhibit that's shown on the screen now and then the preliminary plat that's shown in the packet, there's, there's a little bit of difference in the design in that northeast corner. And it looks like the preliminary plat maybe gives you a little longer run to meet that grade?
That's correct. Yes, this that you see up here is the latest version. There, there is an exhibit in staff report that's the old version. There is a little more room. However, we do have a well and some setbacks from that that are kind of keeping us from moving that street any further west. So it's a little bit further. It helps with the grade situation a little bit. That's kind of the reason that we've redesigned it and pushed it over. But we can't really go any further west than that.
So you're saying what's on screen is the most recent?
What's on the screen is the correct and the most recent layout, yes.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
We had an item a few meetings ago that had to do with the interconnectivity between two neighborhoods, a new neighborhood and existing neighborhood. And the protester that came to that meeting didn't want the interconnectivity because there was a chance of somebody coming from one neighborhood to the other, missing the corner and driving into the playground. So on consistency of the internet, interconnectivity, then I would say a slope in the grade that could probably be accommodated by the 60-foot buffer, I would, I would maintain that connectivity if we could.
Yeah, I, I agree. And it would, it would definitely be the first time, at least, that I can remember in my couple of years on this commission that we brought the variance versus the applicant asking for the variance to not provide the connection. So the fact that they didn't request it, you know, I, I think is indicative of their ability to do it if they had to. I, I'm not, I just personally don't, if we're, when the plan asks for us to provide for connectivity, it doesn't, it seems like we're undermining the plan to say, we'll just do a smaller street and, you know, crash gate it just so that, we're, we're not really honoring the connectivity. And so they haven't, to me, proven that there's a sufficient barrier that prevents us from creating the connection. So I, I'm with you, Commissioner Freyly. That's my long response of amen. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I think we're, we're ready for you, Commissioner Claire.
I'll move to approve item C-7508, subject to the technical evaluations.
The motion is to approve C-7508, subject to the technical evaluations as read, as listed, excuse me. And that motion is seconded by Commissioner LaForge. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 13.
Item 13 is case C-7504, preliminary plat of Wilshire Park, located north of East Wilshire Boulevard and west of Northeastern Avenue. Variance is to sections 5.3.1.1.5 and 5.12.2 of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present? Please.
Yes, sir. My name is Kai Swartz. My address is 8,000 Robie Road. This is a 53-acre tract that I own. It's currently vacant. It's surrounded by residents with tracts ranging between one and five, some of them 10 acres in size. I think what we're trying to do here is pretty straightforward. Make a 30-lot, private neighborhood. Are there any questions?
Yes. This is in Ward 7. That's my ward. I, I do have questions that, I was at least able to visit with staff about your request for a variance, which is listed in, as technical evaluation number three, which, about the open space requirement, which I think I'm in agreement with. My question is about the interconnection. And it looks like physically, there are some challenges with connection to the east, but wondered what, what's the need for the lack of connectivity to this, to the west and to the north?
So, yeah, to, to the east, there are some geographical issues. I mean, you have a 20, 25-foot ravine, so it's very hard to cross. The property is currently surrounded by single-family residents, so I don't see any other neighborhoods, any other large developments being proposed for this area. To the north is a larger piece of property, but it's owned by KCOCTV station network, so that should never be developed as well. And that was the only reason we put that variance in because we don't see anybody ever trying to connect to it.
Can we get the staff take on that?
Yeah, looking at it, there's really nowhere to, to connect to other than just private properties that surround the, the, the development. And the subregs allows you to take that into consideration when deciding on connectivity.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, that speaks to our point before, Commissioner Freyly, about this. So, appreciate that. I don't have any other questions. Are there any other questions from commissioners?
Can you maybe just explain a little bit about the...
The large parcel at the, the far north of the, the site, is that a, is that o, open space? Is that a one plot?
It's currently, no, it's, it's one, one tract, one lot, which personally, I'm planning to keep for myself. But in that, it has issues of access. If you, if you look just to the north of the Loop Road, right, right there where the cursor is, that is another 20-foot ravine. And so the only way to access the back parcel is to build a bridge across it. And then once you get across the bridge, there's only about four or five acres of usable space before the terrain becomes untraversable and can't build on as well. And so that's really the only reason that that tract is so large, is because of the accessibility.
Okay. Just curious. Thanks.
Any other questions from commissioners? Then I think we're ready to hear from our neighbors. First, Kathy Alfred. Ms. Alfred, please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay. My name is Kathy Alfred, and I live at 8509 Northeastern Avenue. Forgive me, my vote just kind of went hoarse for a moment there. My concern is, I don't know the lot size. I don't know if it's going to be a lot, lots sold. I don't know the size of the lots. He says 30, 30, I guess, single-family homes. That's like, what, if each of those families have two cars and it's a two-lane road, that's congestion. And then also, I don't know the square footage of the homes that will be built, the price range of the homes that will be built. We pretty much don't know anything. We just received a letter in the mail stating that you guys would be having this meeting today. One of the reasons why we purchased our property around seven years ago is because we like the, the quiet that comes with, the tranquility that comes with living on Eastern. And also, there's not really much light pollution, if you will. Just concerned about that. And also, whether or not the homes will be hooked up to well or septic, or if they'll be hooked up to the city main with the city sewage. It's just going to really, I think people have bought into this area because, like I know I did, because it's a bit of the country in the city. And I think if you have that many families and that piece, you know, that tract of property going in pretty much one way in, one way out kind of direction, because there's my property, I believe, backs up to it, it's just going to change the feel of the neighborhood. It's going to change it, it's just going to change it. We just don't know the quality of homes, the quality of, of life that it may bring. Right now, we have a lower-income apartment complex on Kelly. Occasionally, we may hear fire shots at nighttime or whatever else, wildlife. It's just, the trees, that's the beauty of the area. So I'm just concerned about the quality of life that will, will change with this new neighborhood that's trying to come online.
Well, thank you, Ms. Alfred. And I can, we can at least address, and you can take your seat.
Okay.
But I, I do want to at least answer some of the things that, that you've asked because those are specifically outlined in this proposal. Number one, it is 30. Where, this, approval of this would, would be 30 residential lots. And it would be public water, public water. It would be septic systems for the sewage. The minimum lot size, and please staff stop me if I'm misreading my staff report, the minimum lot size would be one acre. But the maximum size looks like it could be up to 13 acres. As far as the quality of the materials in the build, that is not within our, within our purview, but I'm, I'm certain the applicant could probably speak to their intentions as far as that is concerned. So certainly happy to, to hear that as well.
Yes, sir. I mean, the plan in here, because I am a home builder as well, is to do some high-end, quality homes. The, in the covenants that we have prepared, the minimum-sized house is 3,500 square feet. And it has in there that anything being built, if I'm not the builder, that goes through a design review process that has to be approved by the homeowners association. So, I mean, everything will be reviewed. It's not just, anybody can come in and build. It, it will go through a very stringent review process.
But that's a private review process. That's not a public process.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from commissioners? Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Given, I definitely, I certainly understand the quality of the neighborhood being a priority. It's a beautiful area. The wooded areas are beautiful. And so it would be my desire, when I first saw this application, my concern was, are they going to build on lots so you can preserve the trees? Are the lots going to be large enough for them to be able to do that? And then, of course, the issue of, of... And then, of course, the issue of access to the water. The fact that it has public water comforts me. The fact that the minimum lot size is one acre is also a comfort as well. And hearing the square, the desired square footage of the homes also is at least some assurance that they're going to be of a higher-value homes. I know that that's something that you mentioned, Ms. Alfred, as a concern. So for me, given those specifics, I am comforted in this, at least as far as this application is concerned. It is a preliminary plat, so they will have to come back, for your benefit, Ms. Alfred. They will actually have to come back to us again after they've done a little bit more evaluation and more work, and we'll see a final plan. And so I'd be more than happy to visit with you about that final plan as well, and we can continue these discussions. I think if you have any more specific concerns for the applicant, it'd be a good idea, he's here. So I think even after we vote on this item, I think visiting with him would be a good idea. And again, I'm happy to help in any way with that process going forward as well. Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I'll just add, you know, normally, I would be, I would have some concerns when an application asks for a variance to the open space requirement. But given the size of these lots and the character of the neighbor, I think everyone's going to have their own private open space, significant open space. So, you know, that's something that I just wanted to bring to light.
I agree. And then leave it to a landscape architect to say, we need to preserve the open space. But I completely agree with you on this one. If there's no further comment, I think we're ready for a motion, and we can begin with the motion on the first variance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of variance 5.1, 2.2 of the subdivision regulations regarding open space.
The motion is to approve the variance to section 5.3.1.1, excuse me, you said the open space one, sorry. Variance to section 5.12.2 of the subdivision regulations. Let's see. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Commissioner Clare.
Move approval of variance to section 5.3.1.1.5, the subdivision regulations.
The motion is to approve the variance to section 5.3.1.1.5 of the subdivision regulations. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for a vote on the item as a whole.
And finally, I'll move approval of item C 7504.
The motion is to approve C 7504. Let's see if we've got a second. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Again, Ms. Alfred, happy to visit with you as well. We're now in line for item 15.
This is PUD 1918, application to rezone 2001 East Rena Avenue from C 3.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who's also here with us. So this is an application for PUD 1918 that would convert the now-vacant former Clarion Hotel to an assisted-living facility. So if you're familiar with the area, this hotel has been vacant for some time now, and continues to sit and frankly be a blight on that corner. My client intends to convert this in a manner consistent with the pictures you're going to see. So it will be a major overhaul of the entire site. And one of the things that I think is the most unique part of what they're going to do is, not only utilize the existing courtyard to make it kind of a tranquil-like setting, but in the, in the parking lot, they're going to erect a wall, and you'll see some of these images as you flip through, and create almost a walking trail through what was a portion of the parking lot. Yeah, Jared, if you could flip, just flip through briefly. So on, sorry, go back one. So this is identifying all the different uses we intend to have. So in addition to the memory care, assisted living, the goal is to have a restaurant, perhaps a pharmacy, perhaps doctor's office, gift shop, spa, things like that. If you go, just kind of, so there's an image of the courtyard, but reimagined. And then this, this is representative of what you'd see around the entirety of the north, the east, and the south part of the building. So taking harsh pavement, putting a wall, landscaping, and creating kind of walking trails throughout. So if you look at the area, there's a lot going on. Of course, just county corner to the south and west is the First American Museum and Okana, and all the things that are happening there. So we believe it's a great adaptive reuse of the existing building, and will hopefully inject some much-needed life on this corner. There are four TEs, all of which we can agree to.
Thank you, and this is in my ward. I think this is a great use of that existing hotel. Great repurposing of that hotel. It's an up-and-coming area with the First Americans Museum and all the expansion that's happening around that. So I am fully in support of this application. Any questions for the applicant from commissioners? Is there, I don't have anyone signed up to speak for item, whoop, yes, I do. Let me change that. I do have one person signed up to speak, Nick Patel.
Hello, yeah, I'm Nick Patel. I am the general manager of the hotel right now at 2001 East Rena Avenue. I support this idea to rezone this to assisted living. With the Okana Hotel coming across the street from us, and also the Dream Hotel Inn and Omni, there's a lot of hotels coming on, and there's a lot of saturation of rooms, and not enough demand. So we purchased this property in 2018 by the bank, from the bank, and it was a foreclosed property. And so we don't want that to happen again with us as well. So I just, I'm here to support, you know, give my support, and ask that it does get passed, so that's all.
Thank you, and sorry, Mr. Patel, for messing up your name. I apologize. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item, item 15, PUD 1918? Seeing none, if I could make the motion to approve, I sure would.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval, subject to the technical evaluations, City Council, PUD 1918.
Commissioner Clare moves to recommend approval of PUD 1918 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as listed in our staff report. It's been seconded by Commissioner Govine. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 17.
This is SPUD 1472, application to rezone 4701 North McKinley Avenue from R 1.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an SPUD application that would allow the single lot that already has multiple dwelling units on it to continue to exist and be brought into conformance with the zoning code. The SPUD has one technical evaluation, which we agree to.
Thank you. And, of course, I wasn't, of course, I wasn't ready. Commissioner Powers, it's the Ward 2 show.
This is, this is a really simple, quick one. This is an ideal candidate for this kind of a, of a SPUD. It's on a corner lot. One of the structures already faces one way, and the other one faces the other. It's, it's really already built out, more or less, so I'm all in favor of this. I think it's a great idea. I would just emphasize again, the way we do our staff reports where we make references to the code, there's not going to be any signage on the property. And whether freestanding or attached, and there's not going to be any dumpsters on the property, right? So, yeah, this is, and there's sufficient parking here for these uses, whether they're single-family or duplexes. There's plenty of room, so. If there's not anybody signed up to speak, if the other commissioners don't have any questions or comments...
I just certainly don't have any, but I'm happy to ask. Are there any questions, comments from commissioners? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item, item 17, SPUD 1472? It appears not.
I'll move approval of item 17, SPUD 1472.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend, moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1472 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations as listed in our staff report. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 18.
This is case SPUD 1473, application to rezone 13,003 Northwestern Avenue from R 1.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant also here with me is Mark Zitzel. This is for the Bethel Foundation. The Bethel Foundation is an organization that helps single moms, provides various social services. What we're seeking to do here is provide a retreat-like setting. We're located just south of Top Golf, in an area where there's a lot of things happening. So we think it's a site that makes sense. The way that Mr. Zitzel's laid out the site will allow them to perform the services that they do for their clients. There are three TEs, all of which we agree to. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in my ward. I am in support. This is an evolving area. I think pretty recently, we approved of some redevelopment around that retention pond to the west of this lot. So the redevelopment is continuing to happen. Obviously, the area directly north with Top Golf and all of the shopping that's happening there, it's just, with Chisholm Creek, it's just a lot going on that's positive. So love to see this economic activity happening, and I'm in full support of item 18. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item, item 18, SPUD 1473? Seeing none, if I could make the motion, I would.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of SPUD 1473 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Clare moves approval of SPUD, moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1473 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations. We're doing pretty good for a while. Oh, we do, I'm not seeing it on my screen at least. Okay.
There we go.
Oh, okay. At least I can vote, I think. But I'm not, it's not showing who made the motion or who seconded the motion. But please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 19.
SPUD 1476, application to rezone 1701 Northwest 12th Street from R 4.
Is there an applicant present?
Yes, good afternoon, Klaus Seron and Philip, and I'm representing Ramone and Amalia Tyrannamas. And our intention with the SPUD is to renovate an existing church into multifamily, and then there's a vacant space north of that church to build a new multifamily structure. And it was rezoned last year, actually, from R, I think it was R 2 to R 4, kind of straight-line rezoned. But the issue with that is parking, and we, there's a provision that if it's abiding in R 2 or an R 1, you have to be a single-story. So we'd like to do a two-story building for that new structure. And we're also building out the attic of the existing church. So that's why we're here for the SPUD. I've reviewed the staff report. There are four TEs, I believe. And we agree with all four of them. On the first one, we'd like to maybe clarify the language a little bit. We did meet with Commissioner Govine and Commissioner Powers about a week ago, so I'd love to hear any questions.
Would you like to tell us about the change in the language to TE 1?
Yeah, so the TE states, "If new building is constructed along Blackwelder, the front setback shall be 10 feet or aligned with existing church structure." We're fine with that. Our intention is to line up the structures anyway. "And then the new building shall be oriented toward the street." And I just want to clarify that that is Blackwelder specifically. And the building has two entrances, most likely, and one of them would face Blackwelder. So our intention is to have a front door and entry off Blackwelder with a sidewalk and direct connectivity to the sidewalk there. But, you know, I just want to make sure that if we get to plan or view, you know, we have the ability to have a second entrance that's maybe not on Blackwelder, so.
Cool.
Is there, is there some language other than "shall be oriented" that you would prefer to make clear that you have the possibility of two separate?
Maybe if we, you know, if it was, "The building shall have an entry on Blackwelder," or something like that, then that doesn't really define what entrances, you know, how many, or, but it would guarantee that there's one entry on Blackwelder, which is, I think, the intent of the TE, so.
Oh, I thought the intent was to make sure that it faced a street specifically. And that, and I saw the amendment as just replacing the word "toward the street" with "toward Blackwelder." Was that not?
I think that's right, but he was also raising the question of whether, at some point later, if they're asking for a second entrance, that there's going to be a problem, that it should be limited only to Blackwelder.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just concerned sometimes with plan or view, they can, you know, as they should, you know, they're reviewing things on a literal basis, and sometimes if there's, if it's not clearly stated, or there's a little bit, you know, it can just lead to issues during plan or view, so.
How about just, "The new building shall have an entrance oriented toward Blackwelder."
That's exactly what I wrote down, is what would be my suggestion, too. Which I think clarifies it, and it is, we need to make sure that you have the ability to have access from the parking to the building, as well as an entrance to Blackwelder. That makes sense, I think. Makes sense to me. Commissioner Govine, go ahead. Well, just to continue on this, yes, we met, I am in support of the application. This is similar to a number of other, you know, similar developments that have been cropping up in this area that's increasing density, helping to, you know, support employment base and more affordable housing for Plaza District and Class of Ten Pin. So, and I also very much like that it's repurposing an existing structure. I wanted to ask one question about the number of stories, because what I recall, we discussed when we met, was, I didn't quite hear you say it the same way this time, so I just wanted to confirm, what were, is that all as written and as agreed with the staff? There's no variance on what's being requested versus what's been agreed in the report?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me clarify. So I'm asking for three stories in the maximum building height, and a maximum building height of 35 feet. And the, if it were like an R 1 zone, it would be two and a half stories. I think it might be or 35-foot. I think there's an and/or, but I want to clarify that we could, I've had some issues with plan or view lately on what constitutes a third story, whether, you know, if it's like an attic buildout or something. So our intention is to have all the units kind of within the, you know, I guess, a mass of, what I think anyone would consider a two-story building to be. But we might have basically three levels inside, you know, the footprint of that. And we just want, I just want to make sure that I wouldn't have issues with plan or view as far as how that's viewed. And if there's some other way, we could clarify that in the language, I'd be happy to explore that. But our intention is basically to have a two-story building with a gable roof that kind of approximates the church in kind of massing and scale.
Well, I have, as, I mean, you're sticking to the 35-foot height limit, I think, was, under that basis, I have no issue with allowing three stories as opposed to 2.5. That was my concern, so I, I'm with you.
Yeah, we didn't have that or in there. It's three stories, comma, max 35-foot building height. So I think that's kind of like...
Okay. I'm good with that, and I'm in support. If there's any other questions or members of the audience that would like to speak on this, I'll be... Well, let's find out. Are there any questions, comments from commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item, item 19, SPUD 1476? Seeing none, Commissioner Govine. In that case, I move approval of SPUD 1476. And then you want to discuss the amended TE? Yes, with TE number one amended to say, rather than "The new building shall be oriented towards the street," we shall say, "The building shall have an entrance oriented to Blackwelder." And the other, TE 2, 3, and 4 would be approved without amendment.
Yeah, minimum, we're fine with the minimum opening space. Dumpsters meet city code requirements and setback for any new garages. We don't have any garages, but we can... We don't have any garages, but we can keep that in there. That's not an issue.
Okay.
Yep, appreciate it.
Okay. The motion before the body is to recommend approval of SPOD 1476 to City Council, subject to the amended, the amendment to technical evaluation number one, as well as the other additional technical evaluations as listed in our staff report. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. All right. Thank you. Thank you. We're now in line for item 20.
This is SPOD 1477, application to rezone 505 Oakdale Drive from SPOD 1242.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. The application before you seeks to rezone the site to allow a landscape company to operate. My client is currently operating at a site just up Oakdale Drive to the north. So this site has been rezoned multiple times fairly recently. It was a tilapia farm and then a medical marijuana growing operation, all of which has failed. And so my client is the landscape company, and like I said, will be relocated from up north. The site, when you look at it, everything to the south is on straight I-3, which is really heavy industrial. So landscape company, it'll be a nice transition, I think, to the residential that exists. If you were to drive Oakdale Drive, you would easily identify my client's site as the nicest site on Oakdale Drive, as you might imagine with a landscape company. It's landscaped very nicely. Everything is maintained, and everything is clean. So there are three TEs, all of which we agree to.
Thank you. This is in Ward 3. Commissioner Fraley, would you like to begin our discussion?
Yes. The uses that are being requested for this piece of land are all appropriate for a landscape company. And the use is fairly similar to what's been approved in the past. I understand, in talking with the applicants representative, that this is, this location is more conducive to the landscape business than the location they're currently in. So I am, I am okay with this application.
All right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners on this item? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on SPOD 1477? Item 20. Seeing none, Commissioner Fraley.
I move to recommend approval for SPOD 1477 with technical evaluations included.
The motion is to recommend approval of SPOD 1477 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 21.
This is PUD 1921, application to rezone 7714 Eastern Avenue from PUD 1404.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is Mr. Dick Tannenbaum, who's also here with us. So this site, as you've heard me say many times from this podium, if the city wants to reserve land, then they should go buy it. Well, they did it here. And through an RFP process, Mr. Tannenbaum was awarded the development to this site. So you'll notice that here, the conference of plan designation is both urban low intensity as well as employment reserve. So what we seek to do is to develop the site with an I-2 PUD that will meet the desires of that employment reserve criteria. The site fronts Interstate 240. It has full interchanges at both Bryant and Eastern, and is, I think, consistent compatible with what the city is hoping to accomplish. You will note that there is a residential development to the south, and because of that, we've worked with staff to ensure that the manner in which that the PUD addresses that was compatible. So what we have required is that, within the south 150 feet of the development, that backs of buildings, service areas, garage bays, and loading docks will not be within that first 150 feet. So the effort has been made to ensure that we have compatibility to the south, but recognizing that this is an important track to be able to develop industrially. There are no technical evaluations. It is recommended for approval. There is an individual here that is going to speak, who represents the oil and gas interests that are on-site. He asked for a deferral for a month, and we cannot agree to that. I believe what we're going to hear is that he wants us to specifically call out in the FUD their ability to develop the surface with oil and gas. They have whatever rights they have pursuant to the leases that they have. Nothing about this zoning would change that. But if they seek to develop additional sites, they would, of course, have to go through the process that exists in the statutes under the Surface Damage Act. The reason that we don't need to call it out in the PUD is because it's allowed by right in all zoning districts now, from a zoning perspective. The original PUD that's on this was done in 2010, which predates the ordinance that is from 2018, that no longer required special exceptions to drill within Oklahoma City. Prior to 2018, if somebody wanted to drill outside of one specific area in Oklahoma City, they had to seek a special exception to the Board of Adjustment to be able to make that drilling. In 2018, through efforts made at the state Capitol, the law changed, the city followed, and now you do not need any special exception. You do not need any approval whatsoever from the city of Oklahoma City, other than whatever permits are required to go drill. Now, that doesn't change what you have to get from the owner of the surface, but nothing about the PUD before you impacts whatsoever the rights that the oil and gas company has. So what we are asking you to do is approve this PUD, as it is consistent compatible with the conference of plan, is in the best interest of the city, and allow this site to be developed. We are happy to work with council if there is something that's needed. Again, I am firmly of the belief that there is nothing needed to protect their interests. Their interests are likely recorded against the property at the county, and nothing about this zoning will impact that. But we have six weeks, or perhaps it's two months, to talk if necessary. It is worth noting that my client and the oil and gas operators have been in communication. Jared, if you can go to the aerial. There are, there are existing on-site operations. We understand that. Our team will have to develop and design the site in a manner that respects whatever the rights are that exist with the oil and gas operator. But, again, this FUD in no way impacts those rights. Those rights are their rights, recorded at the county. We simply seek to rezone this in a manner consistent with your conference of plan. So we'd ask for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward 4. And Commissioner, we're missing Commissioner Privet today, so, Commissioner Hinkle, you going to fill in?
Sure.
I'm just, I'm joking, truly, but go, go right ahead. We can go ahead and hear from, unless there's any questions from the applicant, we can go ahead and hear from Mr. Vance Brown.
Vance Brown, attorney for Stevens and Johnson Operating Company. They are the oil and gas company that owns the mineral rights under Section 36 and have owned them for a number of years. The CLO just recently sold this property to the OIA, which Mr. Box mentioned, and we did negotiate with the OIA for the resolution of surface damages within the past year on this tract. You will see in the aerial photo that I just circulated, this is an image from July 2022. The well pads are on the north half of this section. The image that is attached to the application to rezone is an older image, at least more than a year old. It does not have the, all the existing locations. And I notice in the proposed schematic of the development that was on the screen earlier, the wellsite pads that have been developed on this tract within the last year are not on this platte, that's this diagram dated 9/14/2022. So long after the wellsite pads are there, they've been ignored in the schematic, and I understand this is a proposed design. It's not a mandatory design, and that there'll be further changes in the plan of development. But I question the need to rezone from 1404 to 1921. 1404 had for I-2 zoning. It had specific special conditions to allow, and special use statements within the FUD that permitted oil and gas development, permitted injection wells, permitted on-site storage of oil and gas, permitted electric substations. All that disappears in FUD 1921 that's being proposed. There have been no negotiations with Mr. Tannenbaum or Mr. Bedford, or with other members of the OIA regarding this change in the zoning. This is the first that my client, at least, has heard about it. And so we've had 48 hours of notice to try to figure out what's going on. I think the appropriate solution here is to push this. It's not like this multimillion-dollar development's going to get off the ground next week. There are dozens and dozens of underground pipelines, flow lines, gas lines, electric lines, all have to be located, sorted out, and they ought to be addressed in this new FUD. I would agree that the current status of the law is that operations are permitted as a matter of right because of the 2018 statutory amendment. If that statute's changed next year, then this change in the zoning is going to be detrimental to the development of the oil and gas resources that underlie Section 36. And the statute's changed all the time. Oil and gas operations have been going on on this tract since 1930. It currently produces hundreds of barrels of oil a day. CLO kept the minerals. I don't know where they stand on the rezoning. They hadn't, they hadn't talked to us. But I think it's critical that at least we step back and give the parties a chance to talk about what would be the best language inside this FUD that's being proposed. And I think everybody can be appeased by new zoning if that's actually required. I mean, it's still going to be I-2. But the oil and gas activity is recognized and existing, and includes future use under the existing 1404. And I'd like that, see that maintained in 1921, if that is to be adopted. So I'm not requesting much. It may be a month from now, we're still in disagreement, we'll be back. Could be resolved. But short notice is, in effect, no notice. And I'm just asking for more time to be able to get it resolved, if we can, before the commission votes on it.
To be, I just want to be clear about this, and I'm happy to hear from council about this, as well as I phrased the question to you. I'm not understanding how the change, and it sounds like you conceded this point, I'm not understanding how a change in the zoning eliminates, minimizes, or affects your mineral rights, or your ability to access those minerals. It's not clear to me that that is the case, that we even have the authority as this commission to change those rights in any, in any way.
Under, under the existing statute that legislature has passed, they pretty much have tied the hands of the city in regard to controlling oil and gas development. That could change every time they meet in session.
Yes, but you may recall, if you were here, we were discussing another item that was also presented by Mr. Box, in which he brought up a speculative idea of a potential change in the city zoning code. And you will recall me also saying in that instance, "Well, that's speculative," and paraphrasing, "it's speculative." Like, yes, we think the city might do that, but we don't know that they're going to.
That's true.
It's the same thing for changes that may or may not happen on 2030 Lincoln.
But here, they're asking to change the zoning.
Right.
Why? It's I-2. It permits the uses. Why change it?
And we can give Mr. Box another opportunity to present that. My question for you is about your request for a continuance. And again, it sounds like your rights are still protected because of the existing state law, and you haven't presented anything to this commission, to the contrary. And that's, that's the point that I'm making right now.
The existing state law on the regulation of the oil and gas drilling would protect us.
Right. And so this sounds like-
The existing state law in regard to storage of oil and gas hydrocarbons on the surface, the location of the pipelines, the, the electric substations, that's not addressed in the statute. Those are all still subject to Oklahoma City ordinances.
And I'll lean on, I'll lean on council for that, at least, one take on it.
It's been a while since I've looked at the statute, but from my recollection is that we really don't have any authority other than over roads, noise. There's just a very limited things that we can even regulate. So we, we don't, we don't-
I would agree with you in regard to the drilling and completion of wells. Your authority has been quite limited, and that Revolution Resources lawsuit clearly defined that, and I was, I'm fully aware of that. But as to the other substantive conditional uses and special uses in 1404, I don't believe the statute goes that far. I don't know of a case that would construe it to be true.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Brown?
I'm just, I want to be sure that he understands that what we tend to think of as pretty pictures, these drawings that are attached are conceptual only, and-
That's a good point.
I thought I understood that you said-
Oh, I fully understand they're conceptual. They seem to be prepared in haste, and I just don't understand that. Why wouldn't they actually reflect wells that have been drilled within the last six months to nine months are producing hundreds of barrels a day, and they've got 100,000-square-foot buildings sitting on top of them? It just doesn't seem to me that there's been sufficient discussion with oil, or any discussion with the oil and gas company in regard to the-
Is there, is there some issue with respect to the notice in this case that I'm not aware of?
Word. I represent a mineral owner, not an owner of the surface. The mineral owners-
Again, the, the surface, the change in the zoning wouldn't change the mineral owner's rights. So it doesn't even make sense to me that they would even need to receive that notice. But at this point in this conversation, are there any other questions for Mr. Brown? Because we can allow him to take a seat as well before we have our discussion. Other questions for Mr. Brown? Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No.
Thank you. Then, then it sounds like, it sounds, just from listening to what our council has stated, listening to the arguments from both Mr. Brown and Mr. Box, in my opinion, this sounds like a private matter between the mineral rights owner and the property, and the applicant. Because the question is, can the, can the owner of the mineral rights get all of the access that they need in order for them to actualize their rights? That's not a question for the commission. It's not even within our authority to make a final decision about whether or not his rights are affected, because the state law determines what his rights are, and the state law determines his redress. So I, I don't, we talk about notice all the time, and I think it's well noted, my issues with notice. But on this one, we're talking about mineral rights owners. We haven't changed their rights. Changing this zoning or not changing this zoning doesn't change their rights, and doesn't change their ability to get those rights addressed. So for me, I think it's a private matter that needs to be handled between Mr. Brown and who he represents, and the applicant. But I'm open to this discussion from the commission.
Could I comment on the notice for just a second?
Please.
There's only one entity in the world that's actually out there on the surface for the last 15 years. That's been Stevens Operating. They used, CLO used to have Nagleys, but the use of the surface has been exclusively for the last year, Stevens and Operating Company. So maybe your ordinance and your statute don't require actual notice to the mineral owner, but it is the sole entity most affected by changes in zoning of the surface.
And, and to be clear, Mr. Brown, I'm not aware of whether the notice does require that we notify mineral owners. It would be logical to me that it does not, but I can't verify that. I have not read the statute. So I'll turn to council for notice for that.
No, it just requires 300-foot notice for, as property owners.
Of the surface.
Of the surface, as by the county assessors.
Which, again, is logical when you consider that we don't have the authority to change their rights. So any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on, anyone else wishing to be heard on PUD 1921? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval on FUD 1921.
Commissioner Hinkle moves to recommend approval of PUD 1921 to City Council.
Commissioner Hinkle moves to recommend approval of PUD 1921 to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Thank you. Since I have to leave, I want to tell JJ thank you for all of his help over the years, and I'm sure you guys will do the same at the end of it.
We will. In fact, I'm going to try to make a point to make sure that I have an excuse to call him to the microphone for the remaining five items. So-
You have to leave. Can you not stay, David? David, just stay. Okay.
Yeah, right. Well, I guess we could make him stay, couldn't we?
I don't like that excuse.
We're now in line for item 22.
Item 22 is Case DA3PH, application for consideration of a lot split deed approval on property located at 10317 Hassett Street and variances to Section 3.4.4(c), 2f, and 5.10.4b of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dakota Desai. I'm with SRB at 100 Northeast 5th Street. I'm representing the applicants, Ricky and Christina Hayes. This was brought before you last month. It's a lot split deed approval application, and nothing of substance, nothing has changed in the application. We did hold a public, or a neighborhood informational meeting to discuss the protests that were brought up with the application beforehand. And so the application itself is staying the same. It's a five acre tract. We're requesting it be split into four lots for four single-family homes for the Hayes and their family members. We're still asking for the variances that are listed. The meeting that we held was to discuss the application with the neighbors. We had that on November 28th. We attempted to resolve the issues brought up by them. It seemed that most of the issues came back to damages caused by the previous property owner. They stockpiled a lot of firewood and other types of materials on the property. The going in and out to the property by large vehicles caused damage to the road, Hassett Road specifically. There were large burms on the property that caused drainage issues. And so there's a lot of infrastructural issues associated with what happened previously on the site. So a lot of the issues came back to that, the previous owner, the infrastructure, and the poor condition of Hassett Road. Hassett Road and Joshua Road both are private. For Hassett Road specifically, there is confusion about the easement and its dedication. There's a 40-foot roadway easement in one of the deeds. However, there's a lot of confusion about whether that was abandoned or vacated at some point, and further title research is going to need to be done in order to determine the ownership of that. So the damages caused by the previous owner can't be addressed until the permitting stage. We, this application cannot address any of the engineering that needs to be done in order to fix those problems. Infrastructural issues have been addressed and satisfy the requirements that were previously brought up. We spoke with Dustin Seagraves at Oklahoma City Utilities. They determined that the water main does not need to be extended to this area. It's not a requirement. These lots are large enough to permit well water. The applicants will work with OWRB and ODEQ for water and sewer purposes. And then fire suppression will be addressed with a suppression tank that meets the fire In terms of Hassett Road, the Hayes have reached out to Councilperson Nice and Chairman Pennington to begin the initial process for a paving assessment district to bring the road up to public standards. There seemed to, at our meeting, at least be enough interest to receive an estimate for the cost of repairing that road in terms of moving forward with that. That's another process that is not in our hands, that's in the city. Ultimately, the Hayes have done what they can to reach out to the neighbors and to speak with them about the issues that were had with the application. We have discussed with utilities, we've discussed with other people that the issues brought up by the neighbors could be addressed to whatever standard, or whatever way that the Hayes can do in good faith. And so ultimately, it seems that a lot of the issues can't be addressed in a lot split application at this point. They'll need to be addressed in the building permit phase. That will come back through the city. So we're respectfully asking and requesting your approval for the lot split and the associated variances. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. My first question is about, we discussed in our pre-meeting, and maybe this is a question for JJ, to begin my first of five, at least five questions. Do we need to require that the water main extension occur?
No, after you talk to the utilities, you can go ahead and grant that easement, excuse me, grant the variance.
Okay. Then while we're, while you're up, if we were to grant the lot split, and they were to move forward with trying to develop each of those four individual lots, what permitting, if any, would be required to address the primary issues of our neighbors which surround traffic, drainage, and access to the street in general?
The only thing that the city would review would be the building permit.
So just the building itself?
Building permit, anything that goes along with that.
Are you aware of, and it's, I mean, it's okay, I know I'm just asking random at this point, but we know that part of Hassett is public, part of Hassett is private. The property owner, the Hayes could enter, could join with the rest of the neighbors in this paving assessment district, or any of the individual neighbors, if they were to sell any of these lots, if we were to grant the lot split, right? They would just be able to just join in that issue?
Yes.
I did, thank you, JJ. I did read the report that you sent based on the meeting. I know we've received a number of emails and other comments from neighbors about this. I think that, that, I don't, I don't know that there's a real, I think I identified the real issues, which are about the infrastructure. Like, I don't, I don't know, and I'm not going to speak for the neighbors, they're going to speak for themselves here shortly, but I don't know that there's a real issue with the fact that there would, could be new houses on these lots. I don't think that's the problem. I think the problem is, how do we ensure that the infrastructure can support it and that there's an appropriate connection to that infrastructure to ensure that everybody can use their property and be happy? Right. I don't, I don't know that approving or denying this lot split really changes how we resolve that issue. And I think that's sort of the challenge that we're facing here. And so I'd love to know, since you're representing the Hayes, and I believe that they're also signed up to speak as well, but I'd like to know what plans, if any, you have on your own, should this lot split be granted, to address these issues, the infrastructure, the drainage, all of that.
Right. I mean, going, I'm sure the Hayes can speak to this further if I don't hit everything. Going through the building permit process, they're going to have to bring everything up to city standards in terms of drainage, grading, dealing with impervious surfaces, ensuring that everything is in order and brought up to city standards on the properties. That, that's really, as far as I'm aware, as long as the lot split isn't, I mean, the lot split in and of itself, you're correct, doesn't change anything about this. But if the lot split isn't granted, and the Hayes ultimately don't move into this property, there will be no improvements. Improvements will happen if they're able to use these lots to build their homes, but unless, if they can't build their homes on the lot, then no, no improvements are going to happen in the area.
Yeah, and you're talking, again, referencing multiple homes. I'm assuming the intent is going to live in one lot and sell the others.
A single home on each lot, yes.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And I think we can start to hear from our neighbors, and if you don't mind, I'll make, since it is the Hayes' application, I'll allow them to speak last so that they can, they can have a chance to listen and respond to the things that neighbors have addressed. Before we bring our neighbors up to speak, and I know that there are, there are passionate feelings about this neighborhood, I do want to remind you all that we can't do, while I am outraged, and I can't express enough my outrage at the previous owner of this property, mishandled this property, they acted illegally, the city did not sufficiently respond to the numerous complaints and issues that the neighbors faced, and I share and have expressed to the neighbors how sincerely I apologize, and I'm upset and outraged as you are, about the way that things went down with the previous property owner. But unfortunately for us, those issues are not at, what are at issue today. What's at issue today is the lot split. And what comes with the issue of the lot split is how, whether or not this, access to this property is sufficient, whether or not the infrastructure is sufficient to support the number of homes that the Hayeses are asking for. And so I'd ask, out of respect for, for this process, that we keep our comments to that issue. Because we cannot do anything about the past, despite the fact that we are all outraged about what occurred in the past. So that being said, I'll start with Mr. Fred Simkins.
Fred had to step away. The meeting went a little longer than anticipated, so he is not present.
Oh, okay.
But he is one of the, my neighbors, or hopefully to be neighbors.
Okay.
And builder.
And a builder, okay. Jonathan Majid, and I again apologize if I'm mispronouncing names.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for Jonathan Majid, 10501 Joshua Drive. I'm one of the neighbors, and I would like to say welcome to the neighborhood. My main concern is access from, access from Joshua Drive. And as you can see, it's a real messy situation there. We'd like to propose that the access from Hassett Street. I went and measured fence to fence width. Hassett is 40 feet. Joshua's actually 28 feet affected because of the electrical lines, although the easement is bigger. Hassett paved surface is 19 feet, I measured it. Joshua gravel on dirt is only 12 foot. And so our concern is, if they can come in from Hassett, build a little central street with a cul-de-sac to go back, and put a little nice little gate there to keep other unwanted neighbors out. That might be a better solution, and Joshua Drive is very narrow. We have to, if there's two cars coming in opposite directions, and my neighbors are right there in the back row, Danny Martin and Danny, and Jim, one has to back onto a yard, in Danny's yard, for the other car to come through, or back all the way to Northeast 100. So it's a real clumsy situation. And also, the neighbor in the front, because of the situation, is overbuilt on the easement by five feet. He's encroaching the easement. So that's neither here nor there. So that's all our concern is that they use Hassett for access. Also, Hassett has trash delivery truck that goes all the way, if I'm correct, to collect trash to this lot, where we can't have, they refuse to come down Joshua Drive because it's not adequate. And that's all I have to say. Have Hassett instead of Joshua Drive would be much better. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Majid, can I ask you, are you and your neighbors on Joshua Drive interested in the paving assessment? Are you all interested in doing that in order to improve the street? Have you all had that discussion?
No, we're just a narrow street. The thing is, paving assessment would be, you brought a very good question. The easement, the fence to fence is 30 foot or 28 foot with the electric poles, OGM poles, clearance. They will have to move those electrical, they will have to move the fence back, the front neighbor will have to move his overbuilt garage back. So, you know, that's making them going through a lot to get that assessment in place. It's just a bad situation from the beginning.
Yeah.
So that's my main concern. And otherwise, welcome to the neighborhood, from the neighbors. Glad to have them.
I was going to say, Mr. Majid, I don't think you're making any friends on Hassett by telling us to make all the access off Hassett instead of Joshua Street, but that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I go ahead, instead of every one I'm going, can I go ahead and comment about that one?
Sure.
I'm hearing you, but you're saying it's an unfortunate or awkward situation or whatever, but it has existed, I assume, for a long time. You've, it's not like something they're creating, Joshua Drive being an issue. They're only adding two units onto Joshua, what is one currently, then it would be two. It's not a 700-home development on the north side of there, like we approved earlier with, you know, 700 homes trying to drive up Joshua. So I just want to express that I'm not quite sympathetic to your concern, because the street is what it is, and it was, and it's been like that, and they're not creating the concern. So anyway, I'm going to be, I haven't heard anything you said, and that's in a little bit to let some others that may be speaking know that that's where I'm going to be coming from on this one, is that they're not making it worse, they're just wanting the access to two lots instead of one on Joshua.
Jim Burns, former mayor of the government.
Or private, public and private in part. Are you already signed up to speak?
I am not signed up.
Okay. Well, I usually would like to go with the people who signed up first, but go ahead. You have five minutes to address the commission.
All right, thank you. My name's Jim Burns. I live at 10401 Joshua Drive, just to the west of this property. And the concern with the additional traffic is, there's six homeowners in the area now that use Joshua, and now there could potentially be two more. So 50%, at least 50% increase on traffic, that the road is not that, is probably not built for a lot of traffic. It's a dirt road with, it's been, had gravel put on it. As Jonathan said, when cars meet each other, you either have to try to move over or back up. It's, I think it's additional weight limits, especially when you're talking about the building and the construction. You have larger trucks coming in accessing it, whether you have the concrete trucks, the delivery trucks, the brick trucks, whatever they're coming in. It's certainly not a road built for heavy traffic.
Since he's looking at, I'm going to challenge your math, since you started with it for, if there's currently access to seven lots, including their property, and it would go from seven to eight, is that not correct?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Including their property, there are seven lots that are accessed from Joshua, and it would be increasing it from seven to eight.
Yeah, because you have to be able to access the existing-
It's not changing it 50%, they're changing it from seven to eight. So it's not that much of a significant increase.
The residents on Joshua Drive there are four.
They have one, they're changing it, they're adding one, so. Well, in their case.
It's still a fairly minor-
I'm sorry, it's still a fairly minor change is what I'm seeing, just adding one lot.
Well, I was saying, if the two lots to the west access by Joshua Drive, that's two additional lots, two additional households. So it would go from four to six.
I have a question. Considering the state of these, both of these roads, Hassett and Joshua Drive, which has clearly been an issue and not created by this applicant, wouldn't having four more homeowners to try and deal with that issue help you? Like, wouldn't you want more people to spread the problem out and support whatever? I'm trying to understand, like, I understand construction comes with some traffic, and, but I mean, they're going to have to mitigate any damage they do with their construction. They can't make it worse and leave it that way.
Right.
So it seems like this is, you guys are getting some help here, potentially. I mean, have you thought about it that way at all?
It could be. It could also look at where you're starting from. If Hassett is in better condition now to get to that end versus Joshua, where it is now to get to that end, it could be cost the owners along those roads proportionally more on Joshua than it would on Hassett.
Thank you. Any, anything else?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Barney Kaminsky. And we emailed today.
Yes. Barney Kaminsky, I live on 100th Street at 2600, Northeast 100th. I don't use either of those roads. Really, my only question is that when the permitting stage comes, do the neighbors have any input since we have all these issues with the previous damage that it happened from the wood business? And if there's no concern for what that carryover damage is until we get to that stage, do we get notification that that's going on, and do we get any input and dialogue then?
That is a great question. I'll turn to JJ.
And JJ is the person who's responsible for the department that pretty much ignored us through the wood cutting business and let this thing get out of hand.
I can't speak to that, but I can ask about the...
There's no notice provided for building permits, it would just be something they need to keep up, keep track of themselves.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's no notice about the building permit. Next, we have Ms. Jana Knoll. And before Ms. Knoll comes up, I do want to point out that council just shared that the building permits are publicly available, so you would be able to check the city's existing records to see when those permits were requested, is that...
I think so.
It's possible.
Yeah.
You kinda gotta know what you're doing.
Yes, you can, you can request the permits, but there's no, it's just simply, permits are just checking the boxes, do they or do they not meet the city codes and requirements? And if they don't, then they need to, so there's really no opportunity to have any
Impact.
Change or impact in the permits.
Yeah. And again, no proactive notice to the people nearby that it's gonna happen, you'd have to go seek it out. Okay, Ms. Knoll, I apologize, you have five minutes to address the commission.
Good afternoon, my name is Jana Knoll, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents and property owners on North Hasset Road. I've got just a few slides, these are current, so they have nothing to do with the past. They are simply to depict to you the condition of Hasset Road at the present time. This is a broken down, single lane, dead end road. The entrance, and these are current, you can see the dates, to the right is the entrance to the applicant's property. All of the roadway going north, and I'll put up a Google map so you can see it more specifically, we have tried to maintain the asphalt and everything, my dad cut that road through there. The reference to the property, the Calhoun Estate, that has the easements right now are just minor, they do not include the full length of Hasset Road. So there would be easements that would be involved that would have to be dedicated. Our main concern is not that the subdivision's gonna develop, it's the compatibility with the Oklahoma plan. It's the traffic, it's the mitigation of the disruption, and predominantly for my sister and my behalf, because we're at the very bottom, she teaches at-risk children, we can't even get out of the road, the erosion is so bad. In the subdivision regulations, our question is not to deny this subdivision, it's we feel it needs to be elevated to a minor subdivision, that it does not meet the intent for a deed approval. And the regulation is up there, that land shall not be divided unless all of the critical infrastructure is in place. So we've got major infrastructure problems with roads, stormwater drainage, and other things. Can I have the next slide, please? In addition, when you look at the deed approval classification, that's the simplest form, and what its intent is, is that all of the infrastructure is basically in place. And only thing that is required is the hookup to the individual lots. Where with the minor subdivision plaque, those infrastructure, critical infrastructure needs to be addressed before the lots are ever divided like that. Now, why is that important? Because in the subdivision regulations, it specifically states, because these are too private, and I guess have we determined they're private now? But this is the actual property with the silt fencing of a failed stormwater permit, and you can see our road down at the end of that security gate, that is Hasset, North Hasset Road. My parents vacated that. All of this land was on my great-grandfather's estate. And that road permit for the Calhoun Estate, they're my cousins. So back then, those were just rural roads in 1946, 1950, and there. And that was dedicated to the city, and it was simply so my grandfather could get to his part of the estate. So that road does not include property or roadway access on an actual deed, but the deed is still with the county. So the city's never actually accepted it, and it's never been through a city council. Why is this important? If these lots are split now, it not only puts the residents at risk, it puts the property, the new lot owners at risk, because it specifically states in the regulations that there has to be a statement on these deeds, and when I looked at the deeds in the application, they're not, that says on the warranty deeds, said roadways are private and not maintained by the city. In addition to that, these special warranty deeds are conveying these lots to the individual owners, and specifically stating that there's no liens against the property, but there are. Right now, there's an existing $1,344 lien against this property. So that would assume then that these lot owners are assuming the risk that they're building on roadways that have no city maintenance. It puts them at risk for any future damages or anything of that nature. And it's a premature splitting of the lots that goes exactly against and conflicts with the Oklahoma City subdivision regulations. In addition to that, I want to address Hasset and Joshua. Hasset is in far worse shape, if you can go to the next slide, please. Here's the diagram. 100th Street, you see, and the road that was in question on the south side of that is Hasset Street, that is a subdivision city road. This is a Google map, recent, and you can see what Google map calls it, North Hasset Road. The site property is right there with the red arrow. So North Hasset Road and Joshua Drive, one to the west, one to the east. When you go down that easement, that first 400 feet from 100th to the east are easements, not road dedication. The Calhoun Estate runs then about, just, that's Margot Fuller's home, and she owns all that property that abuts from the entire south boundary. All of her fencing has been ripped out and everything. And the question she has is those are her easements on those sides, those have no road dedication, and the easements also have no road dedication beyond it. Now, the additional difficulty with Hasset is the maneuverability. The solid waste is nowhere for them to turn around, and I'm gonna show you pictures here in a minute of what our concerns are. Hasset Road has an intersection, a blind intersection that cuts off back to the west, and you noticed it too, it's named Hasset Road, North Hasset Road. And our home goes down to that security gate, and that's our home, four-bedroom home and 15 and a half acres, it's also North Hasset Road. So that is dead-ended. This road services a family, two different family homes, one of them has six children, two of whom are newly driving teenagers.
Ms. Knoll, you have one minute.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You wanna make sure we get to the...
So you, can you go to the next slide, please? So here's that intersection, that is our waste and everything, that's the subject property, that's the damage on the erosion. That intersection cuts in through there. So that is a significant concern to the owners right now. And there is no way in the road compatibility that Plan OKC says you're gonna access a new subdivision with one road that dead ends. We're proposing that there be, basically for the maneuverability of the trucks and fire, that, and I don't know if this is possible, I'm not an architect, that there could be a cut-through in two homes, and it's required in the subdivision regulations that those homes have got to front on the access roads. So two of them on Joshua, two of them on Hasset, and there'd be a road, almost like a turnaround, are you kind of following what I'm saying? That would cut through so that we wouldn't have to experience, the waste trucks right now are backing into the subject's property and having to totally turn around in there. Can you go to the next slide, please, and I'll try to wrap it up? This is the present stormwater drainage, and the reason I'm showing this, we're highly concerned as this property develops, that there is oversight and mitigation for a best practices management plan. There's currently a failed permit. There's landfill all under this. And so because it's over five acres, DEQ would be involved. So that's why a minor subdivision actually assures that those things, the major infrastructure, is completed first, then the lots are split, and everybody's hopefully a happy camper.
Thank you, Ms. Knoll, and I appreciate that, and I know you and I have visited before about your concerns with the infrastructure.
And so if you can just go to the last slide, this is really the question, why are they seeking a deed approval? What are they trying to get around? It shouldn't be any different. We've got more oversight and supervision if they just submit it as a minor subdivision plaque. And it really comes down to that last question, considering all the infrastructure deficiencies that's in this application, and the operational impact of a subdivision, is the community better served by a minor subdivision classification that assures more oversight, more supervision, timelines, timeframes, so that we kind of have an idea, this isn't gonna go on indefinitely? So that's what we put before the commission, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Knoll, and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I think that it's important, and we're gonna hear from the Hayes, but I think it might be a good idea if we hear some from staff about some of these specific concerns. I do want to say this, the commission doesn't get to decide what a property owner brings before us. So we don't get to decide whether somebody wants to build a minor subdivision or a major subdivision, or a lot split, or a spud. We get to decide how we respond to that application. So I don't, I think that it's important for us not to go down that road of saying what they should have done. We have the application that we have. And so the question before this commission is what are the laws and regulations that we are required to follow as we evaluate that lot split? So I guess turning to Jared, JJ, Jeff, somebody who can help me, help us, understand the standards by which this commission is to review a lot split.
It's a simple lot split, it would be a minor subdivision but for one lot. You can, we can split administratively three lots, it's over that by one, that's why they're here with a lot split to the planning commission. If it were three, it would already be done, and we would have approved it.
So we could vote no today, and the Hayes could turn right around and go build three houses, two accessing Hasset and one accessing Joshua, or two accessing, or vice versa, rather?
Yeah, the only difference is the one lot.
So then we're, so the debate is about whether we want four lots in this area or three?
Correct.
Okay. Are there, as far as the infrastructure, in our evaluation of the infrastructure, is that a factor, or how should we consider that as we are determining whether or not to grant the lot split? The streets, the...
It's been considered, and that's the reason for the technical evaluations, that you see one to extend the water, which is not required now, and then the other was variance for the number of lots, the fourth lot split.
Okay. Any questions, any other questions for...
But it doesn't address paving, which is the issue.
It does not address the paving, which is the issue.
Which, I think, I think this is one of those things that has just fallen through the cracks. It seems to me that it was county, it got, county intended to dedicate it to the city, maybe the city never accepted it, whatever, but, so, it's just caught in no man's land.
Which is unfortunate. Oh, my gosh. Okay. We're not, we're not here for our comedy skills, I don't think, but...
But I'm...
I like what you did there. Okay, let's hear from the Hayes.
I'm Christina, this is my husband Ricky Hayes. We brought this five acres of land with the plan, we're not developers or anything, I'm a nurse, he does commercial heat and air, we do not develop stuff. This is a whole new process, but we brought it with two other family members and a friend of a family, just to build a home. We've gone through this process, I figured out you had to hire an engineer, 'cause I couldn't do it myself, and so I feel like Dakota and her firm have guided us along the way. We met with the neighbors, we're trying to address things, but unfortunately, a lot of the concern is from Charlie's Firewood. It's a private road, so all four parties involved understand that in order to maintain the road, you may have to pay to update the road. We've asked about the road assessment, which the city is gonna help us with that, and I've also asked a private company to give us a quote. If the issue's a road, everybody pay their fair share and be done. When we had a meeting at Millwood with our neighbors, she admitted, my neighbor, that it hadn't been fixed since like 1940 or maybe 1960 or something? Okay, 1967. So moving forward, we're obviously building a home there, we're not just gonna throw something together, we're gonna go through the steps, we want the road to be accessible, we are willing to share the cost of the repairs with our neighbors, but I don't know what else they are, what else we can do other than that.
Any other questions from commissioners? Sorry. Any other questions from commissioners for the Hayes?
I agree with Commissioner Goveen, I've moved onto a road exactly like this, and the first day I'm moving in, unpacking the U-Haul, here comes five neighbors, come to the city council meeting with us and advocate, you know, for improvements in our community and improvements on our roads, because it was a dirt road that was poorly maintained, you know? So I agree, the neighborhood could come together, there's a lot of land in that area, there's nothing saying there's not gonna be more neighbors that move in and this just continues. I would also say with the drainage issues, if this development did move forward and these four lots were landscaped and established, there wouldn't be as many drainage issues as, you know, on some, what am I trying to say?
Just undeveloped land.
Yeah, undeveloped land. So I think with the development and the neighborhood coming together, it could help the situation.
That's a factor.
I agree.
I do have one more question for staff, sorry. Can we mandate in this lot split that they repair the street?
You weren't kidding when you said five. No, we cannot.
We cannot, so we cannot require any upgrades to the physical infrastructure? Okay, so that's clear. Anything else?
I do have one question, you know, requirements say that all single-family lots have to front on a public street, so if neither one of these is a public street, how are we getting around that?
JJ is really getting that work out here.
Subregs require frontage on an approved public or private street.
You know, the only real question that I would have for the applicant in this case is just, you know, I guess I would like some reassurance that you understand what you're getting into here. I mean, if this hasn't made it clear, you know, the concern I would have for anybody in this situation is that you understand what you're moving into. And I have no doubt that you will be a good neighbor and that your neighbors will be good to you too, but I mean, it's gonna be a lot just to deal with, just the physical, you know, aspects of improving the property. So, you know, if you're willing to take that on...
We're ready.
Yeah, it'll be a major improvement as far as the drainage, there'll be grass and not a lot of soil for water to just run downhill.
That's me.
Okay. Okay. Well, and you all can have a seat unless you have anything else for us. I, I think that after visiting, I have not spoken with Councilwoman Nice personally about it. I believe our neighbors have. I think that the, regardless of whether we approve this application or not, continued efforts have to be made to do the paving assessment and to continue to work with the city to try to see what improvements can be made to the street itself in order to alleviate the problems that have been named. I share those concerns. I think it's serious. I think the infrastructure isn't good, but I have to admit, I mean, this is a, having homes there is a significant improvement to what was there. The damage that was done before was, was terrible. And, and so having neighbors who are willing to come to the table and add to how we can make improvements to that physical infrastructure is important. I intend to support this application for this simple reason. And, and it's not because I think the infrastructure's great, or that I think the infrastructure is, is, is going to, is, is great. I mean, I just, I think it's not good. But at the end of the day, for me, that what's persuasive is, without us approving this application, they can build three. They can build three lots. They can split three lots today without us approving. So the only question for, in my mind, for the commission, is whether or not an additional house creates such a burden on Joshua Drive and Hassett Drive that it's so disruptive that we should just say no. And for me, one additional lot only gives you one other person to pay into the paving assessment and help us address the infrastructure. At the end of the day, I don't know the formal process for the city to take over a private street. I can't imagine that it's a very easy process. I would imagine it's a very time-consuming and difficult process. So likely, a paving assessment district is going to be the best way for us to most quickly move forward with building the infrastructure that's desperately needed for this area. So, for those reasons, I intend to vote yes on the, on the deed split. I, I appreciate the neighbors coming to visit with us and sitting here for the last three hours. I, I still empathize with the challenges that the neighbors on, on both street, both Joshua and Hassett are facing, and am more than happy to continue to visit with neighbors and, and work towards positive solutions for this, this issue in the future. Again, we are not the, as I said earlier, we are not the final decision-maker on this. City Council's going to be the final decision-maker. Oh, they're not, oh, excuse me. We're going to be the final decision-maker. So, I think that we just need to continue to have discussions with Councilwoman Nice, with city staff, in order for us to determine how we can continue to build up that infrastructure there. So, I cannot make a motion on how we resolve this issue, so I'm open.
Well, and I'll just add to what Chairman Pennington said. You know, if this were a developer coming before us, I think I would feel differently, but this is, this is a hard-working family that wants to develop a home for themselves and their closest family. They're not in it to make money and walk away. So I think they thoroughly want to improve the neighborhood and improve their lives. So, again, it's not going to be, it's not going to be easy, but like you said, you know what you're getting into, so I'm in support of the application.
Okay. I think that's a good point, too, that it is not, you know, at least, they're going, they intend to live there, so that is very different. Open to a motion.
So if there's no other comments, I'll move to recommend approval of DA-3-PH.
I believe we need to approve the variances.
I will move to grant the approval of the variance to Section 5.1, 0.4. B of the subdivision regulations.
So the motion is to grant the variance to Section 5.10.4. B of the subdivision regulations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
I will move to grant the variance to Section 3.4.4. C. 2. F of the subdivision regulations.
The motion is to grant the variance for, to Section 3.4.4. C. 2. F of the subdivision regulations. Okay, well, then we'll have a voice vote on the variance. Commissioner, oh, it's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley?
Aye.
Commissioner Govine?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
I also vote aye. We're now on line four, vote on the final item. We'll need a motion first.
I will move to approve item DA-3-PH.
The motion is to approve DA-3-PH. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Powers. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Fraley?
Aye.
Commissioner Govine?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion passes. I know that this is not a result that many of the neighbors are happy with, and I am more than happy to visit with you all personally. I'm happy to get, I think I've shared my personal cellphone number. I'm happy to do that, and I'm happy to continue to listen to your concerns and be as helpful as I can as we move forward with this process. We're now on line for item 23.
Item 23 is Case VP-3, application to vacate a portion of the final plat of Elmhurst addition located north of West Euphna Road and east of North Pennsylvania.
Good afternoon. I'm Adam Singer. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. My address is 4800 North Lincoln Boulevard. This is a plat that's been in existence since the 1960s, and the land has not been developed in that time in a way consistent with that plat. It's a partial plat vacation. The applicant owns 100% of the land in the area sought to be vacated. Nevertheless, we've obtained approval from all of the landowners that are within the plat. None objected. They all signed off on the application. I'm unaware of any objection. This is supported by staff, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
This is in my ward. I'm in support. I don't see any reason why I wouldn't be unless there's some object, objection that I should be aware of from staff. Any questions from commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, and I cannot make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of item VP3.
The motion is to approve VP3. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Commissioner Claire, oh, we might be, might be in business, okay.
Finish strong.
Please cast your votes when available. We're now on line for item 24.
Item 24 is Case PC10853, application to rezone 2000 Northwest 23rd Street from R1 with UCD to C3 with UCD.
Hi. This is Teresa Tran, and I, I am the owner of the, the 2000 West 23rd, and I want to rezon from the resident single family to the, to the, the C3, to the C3, please.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Govine, this is in your ward. Would you like to begin our discussion? Sure. Thank you for hanging with us. It's been a long meeting, so. We often, we haven't had the chance to meet and discuss this in, in advance. I think as a, as a planning commission, we have some concerns with the C3 zoning because these are existing homes. Normally, we would prefer to do this as a spud because we can better agree what the proposal is and how, how the land will be used. So, could, could you maybe talk about, is, do you plan to keep the homes?
No.
You, you do not plan to keep the homes?
Cannot. You know why? The first, if I rent for the resident people, they don't like very much. They come one, two Monday morning, because over there too much traffic, so they scare for the kids, they run out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we, we cannot rent anybody. You bring a lot of homeless come into, to the backyard. So that's why I want to change it, bring to the commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, I live in the neighborhood, a few blocks away. I'm on 18th, but, and these are not, these homes are not in that bad a shape.
Huh? The home?
Yeah.
The home, the home good?
They, they have a real...
But the people, they don't want to rent, because over there too much traffic, and that's why we cannot rent it. We have a vacant lot all the time, so the homeless come and come inside the house, and in the backyard, too, and they break the window, everything. So that's why I want to rezon it, bring to the commercial.
Are there comments or questions from other, other commissioners on, on this case? Yes, I, I have a few, and I appreciate that you would like, I, it's definitely understandable that people would not want to live along the busy, that busy area. I am a proud OCU graduate. I lived on that, on that street for a very long time. I have plenty of friends who live right behind where you're building, and that is my primary concern. If we were to grant your application, as you have presented it, there are, we have no ability to protect the residents who live behind this property. So that's our concern, is that we can't impose any additional requirements on you to protect them. So those people are, are already living in historic homes that, and are used to being, are used to having another home behind them, would now suddenly have a business behind them. So we'd want to put on some restrictions to ensure that they can still enjoy the use of their property. So we'd want to be able to do things like limp, like require you to put up a fence, limit where you could place a building once you tore these houses down, limit what types of businesses you could open on that property, should, so that we can ensure that they're compatible, or at least friendly to the houses that would be behind it. And so our ask of you is that you would consider working with our staff to do, to rezone to a different type of zoning than the C3 that you've asked for in this application. And, and our reason again is so that we can impose, impose some additional requirements to allow us to protect those neighbors.
I, I want to let myself talk.
Okay.
Yeah, my name's Albert. We're not planning on tearing down the houses. The houses are staying there. We're applying for an application to rezone the property, to, or the properties to a C3 commercial. As far as fences, I believe there are fences all along those houses. But yeah, the, the houses will stay there. They're just going to go from residential to commercial.
Okay, but that's, this is an important distinction. So, if we were to grant your application as you requested, we no longer have the ability or authority to require you or any future property owner...
Sure.
...from, from not tearing down those houses.
Yeah.
And so the point that we're, what we're, what I think we're asking for, what I think there's consensus for, and, and I'll, I'll lean to, on Commissioner Powers, what I think we're asking for is, can you work with our staff, take a, take a continuance today, work with our staff to find a, a different form of zoning that will allow us to impose those restrictions to ensure that you or anybody else who buys your property in the future can have those limitations to protect those neighbors behind you?
What restrictions are you thinking about? Because we're, from, from what I read from the, from the protests against the rezoning efforts, they're asking for, like, mitigation funds, and they stated a Texas law regarding state-chartered, like, commercial developments.
I don't know about any of that.
Yeah, I don't...
And I don't think we have the authority to impose that.
Obviously in Oklahoma, some of that applies.
But we would have the authority to impose restrictions on how you would put, where you would put the parking. We do have the authority if we...
Okay, so parking.
If we changed it to a spud, we'd have the authority to address the parking, we'd have the authority to, to address the lights, we'd have the authority to address the hours of operation, we'd have the authority to address the screening between the, your property and the residences behind you. There are a number of things that we gain the ability to do by you going through a different process than this one. And, and to be quite honest and just candid here, if you stick with this application as C, as C3 as you've requested it, I don't even think you have the votes within this commission to get it. So you'd likely get a recommendation of denial of this application when it went to city council.
So you recommend a continuance into a spud, which is the single planned unit development, that one?
And staff is well aware of the types of concerns that are common when you're talking about a prop, rezoning a property like this that's uniquely situated on a major street on one side and then residences on the other. I think they'll have really good advice about how to consider different limitations that you might impose.
Okay. What do you, they're asking for, so no more, a common name, yeah, no more name, a spud, which is what a lot of...
Spud, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they can have more...
Okay, so you want, we do for SBUD?
Yes, ma'am. So, it's, we don't have an issue with you, with you using these properties as commercial. We just want to make sure that it's developed in a way that's respectful to the neighbors. So, so it's going to take a little bit longer, and we come back with a slightly reworded application to a spud, and we, I'd be happy to speak with you in advance of that, as would, I'm sure, other commissioners, so that we can make sure, and work, you would work with staff, so that everyone's happy. I think you'll have success with this, without much...
So, if we can do spud, I think okay, too, right?
Now, that will cause a delay, so we don't have another meeting for this month. We have a, we have one meeting in January.
Or till like January, like, 12 or something.
Is that enough time? I'll look to staff. No, it looks like not enough time.
It probably February.
It would be February 9th.
February 9th. Okay.
We don't have any points now to do that? Can you just tell that?
We, we... My name is Joseph Tran, and I'm a husband. I don't have a name on, on that one, but I'm a husband. And for SBUD, we don't have any plan to do SBUD at the time, because, let me explain a little bit about the area. I hope you spend a little time with me. This area, we let people to rent it, but for the family, they rent it, and with their kids, they feel very unserved when they have a lot of traffic on the 23rd Street. The traffic, not because of the car people pass by, but before, because they have a four-bird shelter install on the sidewalk, or that intersection. So you, you can see a lot of people walking down on the sidewalk, and it make it very crowded. And when people had to back it off the street, back off to the street, it very dangerous for them, and they really feel very uncomfortable to back up. So we have a lot of problem for renting the property. People cannot stay that long. When they figure it out, they're inconvenient, they have to move. And when they move, you know that, see the landlord, and she have a lot of trouble to hold on the tent in the house, because when they move, they can move quickly, just one day they quit, and we don't see people show up, or we don't see the rental, the rent payment. We come and check it, and they already move. So all we do, we have to clean up and do a lot of stuff to try to get back the house and set. There one house with a seat still, leave it vacant for almost two year. Seen a family come there, then their, their son is also MS 30 again, so they just mess up the house. The guy inside the house, they just lay there, and they have a lot of, a pile of rock. They just tool on the window from inside out. So they're, they're no thing, but they still doing that. And right now, they have a, some like homeless people, they come and stay there, and we come and advise and advise them to move, some move, some not. But if they move, then we have to cooperate, but that is not, not a big problem. But the big problem is, we have to clean up after them. After they come in, then we have to clean up. And we spend a lot of money just for cleanup, try to keep it in set. And the house actually given to her by her mom, and her mom passed away, that the family... that the family, so them, they have a brother, sister also have named the house, so not completely her. And she only one who capable to maintain the house. So that really, you see her really, that feel you have really a lot of stress. And beside that, they have a lot of people try to calling, try to buy the house and offer cash. Which we say, no, we don't want to cash, because how can we count the money? How can we deposit? So that truly a lot of, so you see that one, if she keep rent, let people to rent her, and nobody come and rent, then that will be more dangerous for the area.
Well, we understand, Mr. Tran.
Will be, there's several people want to rent the property and to make it like a gift shop, or make it like a.
Mr. Tran, several of us have tried to speak, and you've got, you've got to pause so that you can speak.
I think, I think, we, we understand that there are challenges with, with how properties are marketed and how these are leased. But changing the zoning from R1 to C3 today isn't going to alleviate the traffic issues, the access issues, or any of the other issues you're, you're referring to. And what we want to do is get this right, so that you can, can do a successful development that is commercial. So, so I think we're, I think we're trying to help you. It's just gonna take a little bit more time. And does anyone want to add?
Yeah, nobody's trying to talk you into continuing property residentially. That's too, too difficult, we understand, at this location, given the traffic patterns and so on. But the, the conversion of residential property to commercial property, it just has some issues that are built into it, and SPUD is just a better way to deal with that than straight zoning is, so.
I, I think SPUD or C3 is still commercial. And the, the, we don't, I don't think we, we break out anything. We easy for rent. Most people, they rent a single family, single, single unit, you know? And I think the house still there. I, I don't think anybody rent whole thing, you know? The house still there. I think everybody, they pick one unit, one unit maybe, and they pick the parking lot, everything. And so make the, make, make the, make more busy, more stable, you know? And so nobody can come in, do trouble, anything. So that why, I think SPUD or C3, they still a commercial, right?
Yes, you can still have commercial uses. And we can be very clear about all the uses that are allowed on, in these properties as part of that process when you develop the application.
Okay, thank you very much.
So are you willing to do, it's okay with you that we take the continuance to February ninth? Otherwise, we need to make, make a recommendation so we could go to city council, so we're not slowing.
Count like thirty seconds to explain to my parents real quick.
Yes. While we're doing that, are we addressing the concerns of the neighbors? I know we've got two people signed up to speak. I'm assuming that we are. I think you're hearing that, should they agree to it, we're, we're gonna take a continuance for two weeks. We'll come back and see what mitigation is offered at that point.
Yeah, that works. Okay.
We're good with moving to?
Yeah, so a continuance into February, yeah.
That will work.
For an SPUD.
And, and so I'll ask if our neighbors, if any of our neighbors want to be heard on this item, knowing what we're, what we intend to do is to continue this item. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on the substance today. Happy to hear from you. Please come up to the, to the microphone.
Elliot Young, 1804 Northeast 31st, on behalf of David and Lisa Corber of 2025 Northwest 22nd Street. Most importantly, to your point, Mr. Pennington, about the concerns, we're here to note that the problem that we have here is not necessarily limited to wanting it to, someone wanting it to be commercial, but rather that there doesn't seem to be a plan at all for how these things are going to be used. And so as you noted, making it a SPUD rather than a C3 would provide some mitigation to these concerns. But we also would like to note that, at this time, not all of those concerns would be met by the SPUD. As the applicant had noted, there already is a fence in place, but that does not address ongoing concerns about commercial utilities access, drainage and water access, noise and other things. There could be natural or artificial barriers installed to prevent visual or auditory effects that would, would disrupt the tenants immediately behind that property at, at 2025 Northwest 22nd Street. So not all of those things are guaranteed to be addressed by the SPUD, but we would just ask that, that those things be considered by the applicant when they come back with the, the update to their application. That way, we don't have to spend a constant back and forth on these issues. So just notating that now, so that they can come back with a, a defined plan on how those things are gonna be used, the businesses that will make use of the space, which is another concern, the types of businesses that could go in, the types of effects of those things. Because on net, these types of commercial developments are a positive for the area, but for people immediately behind it, it does, it does present a concern. And, and that, at this time, is about the extent of my commentary on that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I will say this about the concerns that you addressed. Number one, I can't speak to the utilities and the utilities easements, but we have staff here who have expertise in the utility easements and the level of access. So that issue is not going to change regardless of the zoning. So that access issue, your questions about that, you'll have to take that to city staff, and they can address it. Your concerns about noise or those types of things, those are about use. And so if we go to the SPUD, we can customize the uses. That does not guarantee that we can require of the trans to, to have to build something specific. Just because we moved to an SPUD does not mean that we have to agree on that day to what the final usage is that the trans choose to, to use, okay? So if, if, if the neighbor's goal is to know with, with finality exactly what the trans are going to do, SPUD may not resolve that. It might, after this negotiation occurs, but there is no guarantee that, of that. Which is why, which is the beauty of the SPUD, because we can limit the possible uses that they would have. And so that, that is likely where we're gonna end up, is that we don't want to impose a plan on them if they don't have one, but we do want to be able to protect the neighbors from any uses that would be disruptive. And the SPUD allows us to do that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, is there a meeting between them that you would like to encourage? Maybe they know that, but let's be sure, so that they don't all come back and we do it all again.
All again, exactly.
Go ahead.
Yes, I would definitely encourage you to, to meet with the neighbors who are here. Happy to work with Commissioner Govine, I'm sure. We can, we can help facilitate some conversations with the neighbors, so we can hear these concerns as you're working with city staff, so we don't have to do this back and forth for the next two months. Let's just hear everybody's concerns, see what you all can agree to and put in the SPUD, and bring back a finished product to the, to the commission to make a real decision on February ninth. So that way, there's no more delays at that point. And I'm happy to help, we're happy to help in facilitating that as well.
Absolutely. To that end, I move to continue PC 10853 to the February ninth meeting, where I suppose it may have a new name at that point.
Yes. So the motion is to continue PC 10853 to the February ninth meeting for the purposes of changing the application to an SPUD. It's, that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. So I'd encourage you to visit with our staff who's here, and they'd be happy to help you with what the next steps are in moving forward with the SPUD application. We're now in line for item 26.
Item 26 is PUD 1919, application to rezone 11929, Southwest 104th Street, from AA.
Is an applicant present?
My name's Charles Allen, Allen Engineering, 1601 Southwest 89th Street. Kale Witter is, is the owner and his father are here in the audience, if you'll have some question for them. This start, this is a 12-acre tract, or six, just under six, or seven acres, that we're looking to subdivide into eight lots. There's an existing house on the front that would be one and a half acres, and then seven three-quarter acre tracts. The existing, or the remaining five acres in the back there, Kale Witter is already in process of building a home. And I've got a couple examples to show you what, what they're looking to build on these, these tracts. We did receive a, a letter of opposition objection, and I think that was really geared towards the wells in that, that area, and how the additional eight homes, nine homes, if you count the five acres in the back, are gonna affect that. I don't know how those wells were drilled. Mr. Witter, Kale Witter just drilled a well. He's getting, I think, fifteen, fifteen gallons per minute at this point. It's 200 feet deep. There's no problem with his well. They have no issues. There's an existing well for the acre.
Yeah, very south end of the property, there's a, two.
So we're, we're not really aware of any problems in the immediate area. I think it's Fawn, Fawn Estates to the east. Has lots that range from about an acre and a third to an acre and a half. This is somewhat similar. We are a little smaller, under one acre, at the three-quarters of an acre. If there's, I think if there's some opposition that want to speak, maybe we can answer all the questions after they've had a time to, to speak.
All right, well, this is in Ward Three. Commissioner Freely, would you like to begin our discussion before we hear from the neighbors?
I think this is, is an appropriate rezoning. Did you, did you say you agree with all three TEs?
Well, we also, actually, I got a fourth TE emailed to us this morning. We would like to, we would request that we not have to plat it. It's kind of a little speculative on where the lot lines would be, and plating it would be, if we wanted to move a lot line, basically, if somebody came up and said, I want to buy, you know, I want an acre, let's say, instead of three-quarters. Now we start moving lot lines and writing, you know, going through the deed approval process, would make that a little bit more flexible, but.
So you want to eliminate TE1?
Yes. Sorry, I don't have that. We would like to. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make that a sticking point to. It, it just makes it easier, because in these types of kind of developments, like I said, somebody comes up, wants, they want an acre and a half, somebody else wants one and a quarter acre, or something like that. It just, after we've plotted it, if we plotted three-quarters of an acre, obviously, we could sell two, three-quarters, and they could build on that. But it just adds a little more flexibility, not, not plating it.
What is, what is the requirement on wells? Is it one acre or a half an acre?
I don't know that there's any requirement, minimum lot size required.
DEQ is three-quarters of an acre for septic.
Three-quarters of an acre?
Without, with a well.
We've got an expert.
Yes, Dustin Ziegere, Utilities Department. Yeah, to have wells and septic is three-quarters of an acre per DEQ requirements.
Wait a second, what if I just want the well? Is that separate? Is that a different requirement?
Well, you can't have a well without a septic, right?
Is that, is that how that, what?
Are you gonna have an outhouse?
Oh.
Not too many places with sewer, but no water, I guess.
But I guess I'm saying in the instance where, oh yeah, you're right, you're right.
Three-quarters acre, minimum lot size for a well and septic.
There you go.
As designed, that's how we designed it. If I might, could I say a word?
Sure.
My name, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time. My name's Stacy Witter. I've been a builder, based here out of Oklahoma City for 30 years. Licensed in as many as 39 states. I've employed well over 10,000 people over the last 30 years, and worked coast to coast. My company has, this is my son, Kale, and I's brainchild, if you will. Literally bought with every dime we have to develop this, to cross over from just a builder, which we have been, and I have been very successfully, but to developments, and we intend to develop these microdevelopments and grow that side of our business. This three-quarter acre was designed that way. Just east of this property, about a four iron away, is Fawn Valley. Now, those are one and a quarter to about one and a half acre. And using the drawing you see there, here's our property that is shown there on your drawing. And just east of it, this is Fawn Valley. These are executive level homes. Our homes will start in the $450,000 range. They're on executive lots, three-quarter acre. They're 120 feet wide, approximately, 280 feet deep, plus a 50-foot road easement in front of each property on the private drive. So this, these are, I mean, these are craftsman homes. Minimum 2,500 to 3,750 square feet, plus 1,000 to 1,500 square foot shops that are strictly controlled on finishes. This is a gated community with a city road put in. We're, we're doing it right. This is a nice property. We, we have two wells on site now. One of them is brand new. At 200 feet, we have 15 gallons per minute with no issues. It's a brand new well. My son currently, as part of this process, lives at the south end of that property, right there where the notch is, where that house is. He lives there now, and got an above-ground swimming pool, because he's got a house full of kids still, and filled it up last summer, in the heat of the summer, with zero issues. The idea that there are well problems places, I'm not denying, but we have seen zero well problems here. In the, I believe the gentleman's letter that had raised some issues, seemed to me his major issue was the possibility of well problems. And the second was, do we really need more homes? Well, in Mustang, we need more homes. In that area? I mean, if you know anything about it, it is one of the fastest-growing communities in the state and Canadian County. I believe it's still the fastest-growing county in the state in population, with the possible exception of Oklahoma. But the point is, this is a well-designed thing. We've taken our time and put a lot of thought to it. We will do nothing, I live there. I've raised my kids there the last 36 year, 37 years now, in Mustang, or Oklahoma City, Mustang. And I would love to have these homes. My son's gonna build one and live right there, because they will raise everyone's value in that area. Fawn Valley is just to the east, is a good example of that. They start about 500,000, go to about 900,000. And it's literally, I think, 700 feet away, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think, let's, let's listen and see if we have any, to be, to be honest, I appreciate all those comments about, you know, the, the need, and certainly the quality of, of the work that you're going to do, and there's, there is definitely a need for more housing in, in our great city and the, and the suburbs that immediately surround it, for sure. I asked the question, just so you all know, I asked a question specifically of our staff before this planning commission meeting about the impact on the aquifer, the impact whether or not that was an issue, and I was assured that, no, with, given the number of homes, that was a non-issue. So I don't believe we have anybody signed up to speak, but I'll ask, is there anyone here wishing to be heard on PUD 1919? Just so that I can keep my word and have called JJ to the, to the podium. JJ, would you tell us if there are, if we should be concerned about the vulnerable aquifer? So that you can have one last go, one last time.
I'm sure there'll be more. No, I, we don't have any issues with the, with the aquifer.
Okay, thank you. This is your last time at the podium. Do you wanna?
Okay. I do, I, this is a topic that I think we'll continue talking about some, because it's one of, of, a lot of interest of mine, so. Anyway, just for, for staff's sake and stuff, I want to, I want to get more info on this, because this comment shows up, and I take it seriously. So I hope that if it is an issue, it's, it's a real comment, and we need to consider it. If it's not an issue, maybe it shouldn't, shouldn't show up in the staff report. I don't know.
And context matters, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
The number of, the scale of the development, the, you know?
Right, but I don't necessarily buy into the, the logic that the aquifer will never be depleted. You can't build enough homes ever, that it would be a problem, 'cause it's not a problem until it is a problem. And, and we are continuing to build more and more homes. I don't think this development is the problem, but it's, it's a valid point, I do think.
As far as the plating requirement, staff, any thoughts on that? I lied, I lied, JJ. Now you're back.
Plated, we think it should be plated. We can adjust it with deed approvals after the fact, but initially, we think it needs to be plated.
That's definitely my vote. Commissioner Frayley?
Um, I, I would not approve a variance on the plating. I think it does need to go through plating, but there are steps through that process that it could be changed and, and revised as needed. So I am, I am okay to, to approve the spud with the TEs intact.
The motion by Commissioner Frayley is to recommend approval of PUD 1919 to city council. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. And that concludes our separate items to be heard today. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we are now on to additional items. There are no additional items. Communications and report, we're on to communications and reports. Planning commission committees. I don't think any of our committees have any reports to make. Commission members? Commissioner Claire?
Um, I know we will have another opportunity, but just wanna take a second to say, JJ, all the best. Congratulations on your next adventure, and appreciate all your, your hard work over the years. And then on a, I don't know, I just wanna let everybody know, from now on, I'll be referring to Commissioner Powers as J-Pow.
Loving her sunglasses today. Commissioner Powers?
You know, we probably won't have enough time to lavish on JJ all of the accolades he deserves. His service with the city has been really something that has, you know, made a huge, huge difference in my ability to continue to serve, and he has been so helpful to me over the years on both sides of this horseshoe. And, you know, I'm, you'll not be surprised to learn, I'm a big believer in institutional memory, and boy, has he got one. So not only does he know, you know, the code back and forth and up and down, but he knows where all the bodies are buried, so. We will definitely miss him, and it's gonna be harder to do our jobs without him.
Commissioner Frayley?
I feel a great obligation to say wonderful words about JJ also, even though I haven't been here very long, but thank you, JJ, for every, all the support you've given us and everything. And I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Commissioner Gobean?
Uh, nothing, just to further, the sentiments have already been said. I remember one of my first planning commission meetings here as a young, younger, slightly younger architect, and it was just, you know, this, this JJ guy, you know, who is this guy? What do we, you know, just this kind of fear of, but now, anyways, it's been great to get to know you at, at the level, at this level too, so thank you. Thank you, JJ.
I'll only add, yeah, thanks for, for one thing, helping keep us a little civility in here. They've got some upset people over here, and, and here we are, and you're in the middle, a great referee, and I don't know that you ever said, I don't know. You always had something to help us get along, keep it moving, and you've always done so. Tremendously appreciated what you've done there from the middle in between us and, and them. Thank you.
I believe we have a resolution that's gonna be read, and I will say, in, in my comments, from the very beginning of my time on the commission, I met with you probably within the first like two weeks, three weeks of being added to the commission, and I remember feeling so like overwhelmed, like, can, can JJ just sit next to me at the, every single meeting, so that I can have his encyclopedic knowledge of everything there is to know about development services, like next to me at all times? You have a gift, and we, this city is so lucky to have had that gift, to have had you to share that gift with us. Thank you for the sacrifices you've made. Thank you for, for giving to this city in a, in a unique way, your knowledge and your talent. And we are better for it. The people, the coworkers who you have are better for it, the commissioners who have served, who, there have been tons of us, we come and go, but you all are here. You have been here 46 years. Still can't beat Debbie Martin, but that's, no one can. So, no one will do that. But, but JJ, from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of this commission, on behalf of the citizens of this city, thank you for what you have done. And I wish you the best in retirement, and hope you just come on, come back, and you can just come back and hang out with us. But I'll, I'll recognize Mr. Byler to read the resolution.
Whereas JJ Julius, JJ Chambliss began his career at the city of Oklahoma City on December 20th, 1976, and whereas JJ Chambliss worked in the Public Works Department from 1976 to 2001, the Planning Department from 2001 to 2009, the Development Services Department from 2009 to 2022, and the Planning Department since July 2022, and whereas JJ Chambliss has worked for nine department directors, or 11 if you count the, all the times he worked for Bob Teener. And whereas JJ retires as the manager of the subdivision and zoning office, and whereas JJ Chambliss has been the subject matter expert, the go-to guy in the steady hand regarding zoning and development in Oklahoma City for four decades, and whereas during his tenure at the city, he has seen two major overhauls to the zoning code, the adoption of subdivision regulations, numerous ordinance changes, and has participated in over 1,900 PUD applications, 1,400 SPUD applications, over 5,000 rezoning applications, and over 6,300 plats. And whereas Oklahoma City's population has increased by 300,000 people over the course of JJ's career, and he has played a major and important role in the growth and development of our city. And whereas JJ Chambliss should be proud of the impact he has had on the city of Oklahoma City and the countless ways he has helped applicants, business owners, attorneys, engineers, neighbors, staff, appointed and elected officials, and especially the planning commission. And whereas in addition to all the fun things he will do in his retirement, we trust that JJ will tune in from home on Thursdays at 1:30 PM to watch planning commission meetings from his recliner instead of from the hard bench in the city council chambers. Now therefore be resolved by the planning commission of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend JJ Chambliss for his 46 years of service to the city of Oklahoma City.
Here, here.
Here.
Come on back up, one last time.
Ah, thank you all very much for the, for the kind words. It makes me feel tired when you say four decades, 6,000 plats, and, gee, that makes me feel old. No, I've, I've, I've really enjoyed my time here at the city and, and working with the planning commission. Lots of great opportunities and, that I've had, and I don't take those lightly, but it's, it's not easy really, when it gets closer to, to leave something you've done for this long and just quit all of a sudden, but I've got a lot to keep me busy, and it'll be okay. I'll come back every now and then, and, I told, I'm gonna come down and protest some cases.
You're gonna get called up to answer for like staff, though, so just be careful when you do that.
Okay. No, thank you.
Were you here for PUD 1?
Yes. Yes.
Wow. I love it.
You know what, I want to say, one of the great things that JJ has always been, that his approach to problems is never to try to shut them down or make them go away. It always is to try to get you where you're trying to get. And, you know, he, he employs a, a really encyclopedic knowledge in, in doing that, but it's, it's really just that attitude, you know? He's always, always trying to help, rather than, you know, stymie anything that, that gets brought to him, and that's invaluable.
It really is. So, thank you, JJ.
The thing I would like to say about JJ is, I'm here, is, don't go too far. We still have him listed as our expert witness on some, several cases.
Uh-oh.
So don't leave the country. And he's always been a great expert. Knows everything.
That's great. Jeff, please.
I'll, I'll do my planning department comments right now. Yeah, I was just thinking, I don't think I've ever seen, JJ's such a smooth operator. I don't think I've ever seen, seen him even flummoxed, like, he, he just, even if he doesn't know something, he makes it seem like he, he, like that is totally natural and, and okay, and nobody on the planet would know it anyway, so, so everything is cool. So, but, but knowledge is encyclopedic. JJ's been great to work with, and we will miss the magic that he does day in and day out, so. I was just also happy to be able to call you Julius, if, only for a moment. Hopefully that won't get me in too much trouble, but it was, it was on this paper, so, so congrats, JJ.
It's a rough time on this commission. We lose Paula, lose JJ. Jeez, this is, it's, it's rough out here. So you have to help us recruit, recruit our, our next crop, and they must stay, stay a minimum of 46 years. Okay, well then, we are now in line, municipal council's office, any additional comments? Citizens to be heard? Even Mr. Warrior left. Other business, before we adjourn, I do wanna comment that this is still the shortest December meeting I've attended in my four years on this commission. So I know we're out late, and I appreciate your patience with me as we try to get through this process, but it's still shorter than any of the ones I've been to. So, thank you all, and seeing as we have reached the end of our business, we are now adjourned.
We can look on the bright side.
Yeah.